I'm calling to order the Woburn School Committee meeting for February 9th, 2021. Could we please all stand and move the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Malrennen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the audience tonight. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence for Ms. Nancy Shere, one of our employees, as well as Jackie Wells, Dr. Wells's mom. Both of these ladies served in our Woburn School System over the years, and I want to take the knowledge then of their moment of silence and remembrance at this moment, please. Thank you for Ms. Shere and Jackie Wells. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Malrennen. Is there any reason why we can go forward? Is everyone okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This is a public meeting conducted under the Governor's Executive Order administered around March of 2020 that permits public bodies to have remote meetings if they're providing simultaneous viewing by the public. The school committee is having this meeting due to the inclement weather via Zoom. It is also being recorded and will be, if anybody speaks to the school committee tonight, you are consenting to be recording, and the public media will be publishing the meeting as soon as possible. That being said, could the Superintendent, Secretary to the School Committee, please call the roll?
You speak now.
That's our internet, then.
Oh, oh, sorry, he got kicked out. Hold on, he's coming back in.
We don't?
It just sucks.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi, Dr. Crowley. Would you mind calling the roll, please?
Sure.
Ms. Chisholm?
Here.
Ms. Cormier?
Present.
Mr. Kissel?
Here.
Mr. Lipsit?
Present.
Ms. Malrennen?
Yeah.
Dr. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Crowley?
Present. And I have to ask the public, you all know the drill, please mute unless you're speaking so that we can talk to our public business. I'd really appreciate that. I can mute people, and I will, just so we can make the meeting move smoothly. Okay, moving on, we have approval of minutes for 1:27:21. Do I have any action?
Motion to approve.
I have a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
In favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes 7-0. Those minutes will be published as official school committee minutes. Student representatives, I think they are here. The student representatives to the school committee.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, Sage. And my, uh, my, uh, I apologize without. Um. At least. Uh, very nice, 21.
Ms. Frandudo, I deeply apologize, we can't hear you, you seem to be breaking up, and I don't want to, I know what you always say is really important. Is there a way to?
Is that better? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, it's still quite glitchy. Sometimes it helps to turn your camera off, I don't know.
Let me try that.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes.
It is.
And I'm sorry, you can't see your picture.
I am sorry.
Oh, no, no, please do not apologize. I just want to make sure everybody can hear what you have to say, because you always have, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so as of February 9th, 2021. Just to hold in.
We're losing her.
Ms. Frandudo, I have to apologize again, we can't hear you. Do you want to present a written report to the school committee at a later time? Or do you want to come back and see if?
Let me try that. I'm gonna log off and try to sign back in.
Absolutely. And when you're here, you just let me know, I'll find you somehow, okay?
Thank you, I apologize, thank you.
Okay.
No apologies.
No apologies, please, thank you. So we'll move on to public comments. Normally, we would have a sign up for public comment, but I'm just going to allow people to chat me and let me know if they would like to address the school committee. I know we had one person that requested to speak. I'm not, oh. Uh, Ms. Adenizio.
Oh, nice.
Ms. Jamie Adenizio. Could address, you can address the school committee, and you have a, I'm sorry, it's a three minute.
Can you hear me, Ellen?
Yes, I can.
Hi. How are you? My name is Jamie Adenizio, I'm a parent in Woburn, I have a sixth grader at the Joyce, and I have a fourth grader at the Hurd Wyman. This evening, I want to specifically address concerns I have regarding access to equal instructional hours at the Joyce Middle School. My son currently receives just shy of 25 hours of live instruction over a two-week period. In the event that a teacher is absent on a Wednesday, there is no substitute, and the 24 hours, 24.9 hours is reduced even further. He receives no live instruction or synchronous work on his two remote days. Things that cannot count asynchronous work defined by the Department of Education are office hours or optional check-in opportunities for students to contact or connect with teachers where not all students are required to be present. The new mandatory check-ins that started this week almost seem like a way to say that kids are receiving synchronous instruction but are merely just taking child attendance and not providing any instruction during that time period. Therefore, the current academic situation for my son is far from being compliant with the state mandated guidelines. During my son's two remote days a week, he averages anywhere from one to two hours a day of asynchronous independent work. A major concern of mine is that sixth grade is still technically elementary school, and these sixth grade students really should be receiving the same academic instructional hours as the rest of the elementary students in Woburn, which currently averages about 35 hours over a 10-day school period. Sixth grade is also a transitional year in Woburn, and it can make kids extra vulnerable, especially for students who are on 504 plans like my son, IEPs, or any student who may be struggling and is in need of more live engagement and instruction. One of the main issues I believe that needs to be addressed in an expeditious manner is the optional nature of live streaming classes to students at home. This is creating a very unequal divide among students' access to both curriculum and education. Woburn needs to move to an all-or-nothing approach with the live streaming to remove the current inequities that are taking place across grade level. My son has peers that are receiving close to 35 hours or more of live stream instruction over a two-week period. My son spends two full days a week asynchronous in attempting to learn independently at the age of 11 while only being offered mandatory attendance each period but absolutely no access to the instruction. In the event that teachers continue to not be required to live stream their classes to students at home, the districts really should be considering hiring teachers to provide instruction to the remote students on those days. I want to highlight that equity in education is a right and not a privilege. I should not have to be speaking tonight to advocate for my son to receive equal hours of educational instruction in the town of Woburn. It is not okay to have one sixth grader receiving just shy of 25 hours of instruction and another receiving 35 hours or more of instruction. When did such a disparity become acceptable in education? I wanted to note that I have filed a formal complaint with the Department of Education, and I did receive a response already that my issues, the issues that I have raised, are being looked into. I would prefer that we're able to resolve this within the town, but it's an issue that needs a resolution immediately. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Adenizio. I didn't mention, and I should have, that the school committee can't respond, unfortunately, and have a back and forth with public speakers, people that choose to comment, because it would violate open meeting law. But what can happen is the administration can follow up with your concerns, and I will say this on behalf of the school committee, we actively encourage people to come to the school committee and speak to us, and so we really appreciate your feedback as a parent in this town. So thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the school committee tonight? They can just chat me directly, and I can recognize them.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Mr. Malrennen, you're already on the school committee.
I know that. I just want to remind the young lady who just spoke recently to perhaps email the Secretary Jean McLeod her notes, her comments tonight, please, if she would.
Yes, Ms. Adenizio, as what you can do, and it's voluntary, you can submit what you, if you were reading from something, you can submit.
I was.
You can submit that to the school committee for a public record as well.
Sure, yep, no problem.
Of course. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to address the school committee? I'm not seeing any. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Is Counselor Michael Concannon here tonight?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Concannon. Is there anything you'd like the school committee to know?
I do not have a report this evening, I'm in listening and learning mode tonight, and I was listening to that last parent, and I'm sure the school committee will give it all the attention it needs, because everyone's goal is to make sure that we're offering the best educational opportunities to everybody in the city. And I applaud Ms. Adenizio for coming forward. It takes courage to speak to the group and to put your thoughts out in the public forum, and I would encourage others to do the same.
Thank you, Counselor Concannon. Okay, moving on, our agenda has next the executive session.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the regular order of business and move that to the back end of the committee meeting, just for further smoothing the flow of information to the public, so they don't have to wait around for that.
Yes. I have a second, and any discussion on that motion to move executive session to where it normally is at the back of the agenda? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
In favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes, executive session will be at the end of the meeting. Moving on to reports and presentation of superintendent and staff, I see that we have live presenters, perhaps there's a motion to move those to the top of the agenda.
Madam Chair, faith has resumed, has come back into the meeting, I was wondering if we wanted to give her another chance to?
Perfect timing. Ms. Frandudo, how is your tech working?
Let's check it, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Wonderful, awesome. I apologize for that. All right. All right, so let's try this again. As of February 9th, 2021, Ms. Gustan Hoven, the Science and Technology Curriculum Coordinator, was notified yesterday that WMHS was awarded a $45,000 project lead-the-way grant. The PLTW courses were already in motion this year, and will grant, and the grant will allow schools to bolster the curriculum and training for the teachers and enrich classes for students. On the topic of five-minute check-ins, WMHS will begin five-minute check-ins for students at the start of each class on February 8th. This impacts all cohort students, example cohort B on Monday and Tuesday. Teachers will share Google Meets for students to join for the five minutes of each period. Students are required to join the meet each period at the start of all classes, show their faces on the Google Meet, and then log off once a teacher says they're done. On the topic of live streaming, 45 teachers at WMHS started an expanded livestream initiative on Monday, February 8th. Students that are on off cohort with livestream teachers are required to log in at the start of class and remain logged in for the duration of the period, or complete work assigned by the teacher during the class beginning Monday. Students are required to attend, and asynchronous assignments will no longer be given for these courses. If a student is not present, it is considered an absence. The close of Term Two in Semester One, February, Monday, February 8th is the start of Term Three. Also, Semester Two for students, report cards for Term Two under Semester One will be published February 11th. A Class of 2021 update, exciting times are coming, and I know this has been a difficult year for you, where many rites of passage have not come to fruition. Principal Callanan and class advisor, Ms. Sands, are working hard to deliver all we can for the senior class. On the topic of the SAT, over 200 juniors have signed up to take the Woburn-only SAT in March. Nice job, Class 20, Class of 2022, this decision was made to host a Woburn-only SAT to ensure the safety of our students. The College Board, the company that runs the SAT, would only offer this in March. Ms. Miller, the new SAT and ACT coordinator, will set up additional tests after March when deemed safe. The ASVAB for those students in grades 10 through 12 that plan to enlist in the military after graduation will be offered at WMHS on February 24th from 9:00 to 12:00. Interested students will complete the following survey by February 12th. And on the topic of the Seal of Bioliteracy, last year, the World Language Department started the Seal of Bioliteracy program, and this continues in 2021. Students in Honors World Language classes will be required to take this exam, but is open to any student that would like to demonstrate proficiency in a second language other than English. If it is earned, the Seal of Bioliteracy is reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and is a distinction for college applications and our graduation. On the topic of athletics, winter athletics are in the cup, in the last couple weeks of the season, and the wedge or fall-to session will begin soon. Athletes interested in participating in football indoor, which will be outdoor track, or volleyball should complete family ID, submit updated physical exam information to the school nurse, and listen to and read the morning announcements for tryout information. And lastly, the WMHS Model United Nations Club had its first conference this past weekend, held by Boston University. And that concludes my report. Hopefully you all could hear me.
I heard you perfectly, and that was, again, on point. Do any of the school committee members have any questions for student representative Frandudo? I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much for your wonderful report, and I want to remind you that you are absolutely, you can absolutely stay for the school committee meeting, and as the representative from the high school, you can actually debate with us, so you just can't vote. So if there's anything on the agenda that you find to be interesting, you're always invited to give your input on behalf of the students. So thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Of course. Okay, moving on, back to reports and presentations of superintendent and staff, and someone was going to make a motion to hear the live presenters first. Do I have that motion?
Make the motion.
Second, okay, so we're actually, we're adjusting the agenda so that we have silver linings, B, go first. Do I, and I have a second, any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm? Ms. Chisholm?
Yes, sorry, I was muted.
Um, Ms. Cormier?
In favor?
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, the motion passes. So we will hear, so Ms., Dr. Crowley, do you want to just make your presentations as to who is here tonight? Thank you.
Yes, please, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Embrace Club, under the direction of Mr. Martin and Ms. Cardoso. I'm going to share my screen, hopefully, and allow them to do their presentation.
Okay, good evening, Embrace Club, whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening. Can anyone hear me?
Sure can.
Yeah, yes.
All right, awesome. So first of all, I would just, would like to take this time out just to thank Dr. Crowley, Superintendent Sprague, and Bo Sari, Mr. Alcanada, all school committee members, just for the opportunity to come back here in 2021 and share all the great things that Woburn Embrace has been able to accomplish even through all the pandemic. They've really, I'm extremely proud of everyone that's not only on this call, but of our entire club. We've done things I don't think people thought that maybe we can do, especially given the constraints that the pandemic has put us under, but we know, we move on, that's what we do, and I cannot wait to, for you guys to hear from our student leaders and our advisors. I know I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I know you guys have an agenda, you guys that you need to get through, and so with that being said, I am just going to start us off with our club description. All right, there we go. So Embrace is a diverse and inclusive group of Woburn Memorial High School students of different races, immigration statuses, religions, cultures, and ethnicities. It's a safe space for challenging discussions and topics that affect the lives of students of color and their peer allies. Our goal is to spread awareness, as well as attending host events on issues surrounding race, culture, heritage, and more. We meet twice a month. There have been some months in which we have decided to have more meetings, leading up to the election and the inauguration, we felt as I knew that there were students who would like to meet more than just twice a month. Embrace has always been a place where students can come and feel comfortable, it's almost therapeutic in some ways, and somewhat serves as an intervention as well, especially during times like this. So there are times when we feel as though we need to have more meetings, we always do. Ms. Cardozo and Ms. Matthews and I, we are there for the students, so whenever they need us, we are there. So as of now, we do only meet twice a month, but again, we're always open to meet three or four times, typically on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 3:00. So if you guys are ever interested in coming, we can definitely provide you guys with the Google Classroom link, and you are more than welcome. I know that Mr. Lipsit has been to a few meets, as well as Mr. Walsh came by, he stopped in last week because he is piloting or starting a race relations course in the fall, and so he asked for our feedback, so we have had, you know, people stop by, but like I said, we are open, all are welcome, as it says at the bottom, so you guys are more than welcome to come by whenever you have time. I'm now going to just quickly kind of introduce our advisors, staff advisors, as well as student leaders. So obviously, I am Mr. Martin, I founded the club back in 2017 with Mr. Bromley, and now I've brought on Mrs. Cardozo and Ms. Matthews. Sophia Matthews is a senior leader, Kristi Delanois, she's a senior leader, Omar Mahoudin, he is a junior, he will be back next year, I'm very proud of Omar, and Ezra Maguania. Ezra actually just recently transferred, unfortunately, transferred to Haverhill High School, but he still, he still asked to be a part of Embrace, so he is still on, and he comes whenever he can, he decided that tonight, he did not want to miss this opportunity. So even though he isn't Haverhill, he still has a home in Woburn, so he knows he always will. So we're very happy that he's still a part of our team. The next slide are just pictures from left to right, obviously you guys know who I am, from top left, Mrs. Cardozo, Ezra is a gentleman right in the middle in the black jacket, Sophia Matthews, Mrs. Allscholastic, everything, female wrestler, and her mom, Omar Mahoudin, very good-looking gentleman, bottom left-hand corner, Tefat and Pharrell Budif in the middle, and Kristi Delanois. So those are our senior and junior leaders for 2021, very proud of all of these individuals. I would just quickly want to take a minute to allow Mrs. Cardozo and Mrs. Matthews to say a few words, introduce themselves, if they would just unmute themselves, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that might not know me, my name is Amy Cardozo. I am an English teacher in the PEAK Program at Woburn Memorial High School, this is my 10th year, I can't believe it, but my 10th year working at Woburn High School. I am a product of the wonderful Woburn Schools myself, I graduated in 2004. Besides running our help advising Embrace with Mr. Martin and Mrs. Matthews, I'm also one of the co-advisors to WMHS Peer Mediation. I am also the Woburn Public Schools High Set/GED Preparation Course Instructor in the evenings for adults who maybe do not have a high school diploma and are interested in getting a high school equivalency. So I like to keep myself busy within Woburn Public Schools. I love my job, I love these students, and I tell them all the time, they might get a little annoyed with me and text messages once in a while when we're planning things for our club, but I'm very honored that Mr. Martin asked me to come on Boyd last year, and this is one of the highlights of my career, to help advise these wonderful students. Our club is, like Mr. Martin said, open to everybody, and we would love to have any views, stop by for a meeting anytime you can.
Thank you, Amy. Rosalie, did you want to say a few words? I know you're on with Sophia.
Hello, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you for having us, and I am a paraprofessional at the high school also, as a parent, as a Sophia and a high school student, and I have 9 years old at the Reeves, and I'm a coworker at Embrace also, I'm very glad and happy to you guys having us, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Rosalie. So what I had, what I thought as a way for you guys to get to know our students, they all decided they were going to work on individual slides themselves, the slides that they were either involved in, or the slides that they feel the most passionate about, so all I asked them to do, since we are not in person, is to quickly kind of introduce themselves. I did ask them to mention any schools that they are applying to, the majority of them are seniors, and even during the midst of very challenging, difficult times, they are still applying to colleges, doing everything that they need to do to make sure that they have an opportunity to fulfill their dreams. And for a lot of these guys, it starts in college, so they are just going to quickly introduce themselves, quickly mention some of the schools they have applied to or have been accepted to, and then they are going to get right into their discussion. Thank you. Sophia, I believe the first slide is all yours.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sophia Matthews, I am a senior at the high school. I have applied to Bentley, UMass Lowell, WPI, and Sacred Heart. I'm on the wrestling team, and I also wrestle for a club team year-round. I am one of the co-leaders of Embrace, I am a part of Peer Mediation, I am in the National Honor Society, I am president of the Spanish Honor Society, and I plan on majoring in International Affairs, which is a business major, and minoring in Spanish. Mr. Crowley, could you go to the next slide, please?
Next slide?
Yes, please. So I'm going to be discussing the student and alumni panels that we've had in the last couple months. So during September of 2020, about two weeks or so before school started, we had a three-day student panel discussion, discussing racism, prejudice, and microaggressions within the Woburn Public Schools and within schools in general, from elementary school through high school. I was on the panel, along with Omar, one of the other co-leaders, and Samuel Newton, another senior at the high school, and Brooklyn Man, WMHS alumni. We discussed with staff at the high school over three days, including a livestream on the last day, about how they can create a safe environment within the classrooms, and encourage students to have these tough discussions, and to further everybody's understanding of prejudice towards any minority. Then recently, there was an alumni panel hosted by Mr. Martin virtually with, I don't have all their names, but a past alum between 2000, the early 2000s, and they discussed the transition from WMHS to the real world, including college, their career paths and social life, and how racism and prejudice has played a role, or may not have played a role within these topics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. All right, Kristi and Ezra, are you guys ready?
Uh, yeah.
Someone just needs to tell when to move the slides, I apologize.
Um, you can go to the next slide.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kristi Delanois, sorry if I'm jittery right now, I'm actually really nervous about this, public speaking kind of isn't my thing, but you know, I try my best. Um, obviously, as you guys have heard, I am a senior at Woburn High, I am captain of the step team, co-president of Embrace, I am also in National Honor Society, a core leader in Survive the Drive, a peer leader in a peer leader in the Dating Violence Task Team, and I'm involved in a lot of other stuff at school. Um, I've applied to a lot of colleges, although I don't know where I'm going yet. Hopefully I'll know wherever God takes me, that's where I'll go. And I'm planning on managing and majoring in healthcare management with a minor in communications. Um, on this slide, I'll be talking about the Black Lives Matter rally that happened on June 4th last year during the summer. It was organized by a Woburn High graduate. She was a graduate of class of 2020, Brooklyn Manna. And she asked me and other members of Embrace to help plan this event in response to the racial injustices that was going on during the summer, like, um, Ahmaud Aubrey, Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, and many other people. And it was a very peaceful protest. I think about 600 plus people were there. It was very, it was, it was amazing. It was really good. I know a lot of you guys were there. But if you guys remember, it was really, really great. Uh, advisors spoke, members spoke. I actually wrote a poem and I spoke there. Um, honestly, I think it went very well. And we also had a, I'm pretty sure it was an eight-minute and 46-second moment, moment of silence for George Floyd. And it wasn't violent at all. A lot of people showed up. A lot of people supported. And honestly, I think this is something that we should do again. Just, you know, just like step by step, little by little. It was just a really good event. And yeah.
Thank you. And you spoke very eloquently. You have absolutely no reason to be nervous. That was tremendous. Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. Hi, everyone. I'm Ezra. Um, I was a student at Woburn Memorial High before I moved over to Haverhill. Um, I'm now, you know, a senior there as well. Um, I'm applying to mainly local schools. Um, I'd like to major in finance, uh, mainly applied for UMass Lowell, which is kind of close to where I live now, you know, Salem, Salem State or Sisters State University. Um, I'm just going to talk about the Martin Luther King Junior, um, kind of virtual celebration that we did. So, um, in partnership with St. John the Baptist Church, um, SCI, Woburn Welcomes, and the City of Woburn, we had a student-led panel, um, in which we had about 90, 90 participants, 80, 90 participants come to the event. Um, at the event, we had, um, you know, just conversation. We spoke about, you know, like our mental health, how everyone was doing in the panel. Also spoke about, um, you know, Martin Luther King, what to take from the messages he, um, kind of gave in certain speeches, um, and how we can apply that to, you know, a post-pandemic world. Um, how we can keep, you know, keep moving forward, given the strange times we've had, um, for the past, you know, a couple of months or year it is now. It's crazy. Um, so yeah, the theme was where do we go from here? Kind of like an ode to, you know, the pause that we had, um, the pause, the pause that we had, sorry, post-pandemic and how, you know, the whole world stopped, borders closed, you know, the rest. Um, so yeah, we kind of, it was about an hour on Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, a lot of people got involved. They gave questions, which were very good. And we just, um, because it was student-led, we were just able to give a fresh perspective to all the people who joined, um, from the students and how we feel. Um, and really, you know, we spoke about a lot. We tried to cover a lot of bases. Obviously, you only have an hour. A lot of people had separate celebrations they had to do or work. So we tried to fill in as much as we could, you know, again, speaking about the Black Lives Matter movement, which is closest to some of the people involved or that we had to meet, as well as, um, the elections and, you know, the protests and other things that happened around, um, that time period, um, which was all about a month ago. Um, so yeah, it was really enjoyable. We started singing from some of our students. The wonderful Kristi Delanois and Abigail Here, um, they sang for us. Um, really great singing, guys. You should have been there. I'm sorry. But, um, yeah, um, thank you for letting me speak. Um, so I'll hand over to the next person.
Hello.
Thank you, Ezra.
Oh, my fault. Sorry. Um, so I'm actually a junior at the high school, so I'm not going to college. No, I meant, um, not going to college. Yeah, like I'm not applying or that, not having started the full process yet applying anything. But, um, I'm class president. I run track and field and cross country. I just recently got elected captain of the cross-country team. And, um, I'm one of the officers of DECA. And obviously with Embrace, um, I've been involved ever since Mr. Martin asked me to join. Um, I actually hadn't heard of the club when I first got to the high school. And so he asked me to join and I decided, I was glad I did because we ended up getting like so much done. And like, it just felt like good to be a part of that kind of group. And one of the main things that we've done to raise money was, um, sell ribbons. Um, at the time, we were kind of thinking of ideas and for like bake sale ideas and think like a typical idea. And then we looked towards ribbons and we were kind of like, okay, like we can do something like that. It's low maintenance and it was actually a lot more popular than we thought like it was going to be. So then we ended up selling them, um, in the morning and in like in between lunches, like we'd have students set up. And then another time we sold them was at the Future Tanner Night, which also was really successful. We sold the ribbons for $1 each. And I know personally even people would just donate, like as they were getting the ribbons, like they'd give us a five and ask us to keep the change. Like there was a lot of donations that came in along with people getting the ribbon. And like the next few weeks, you'd see like everybody with a ribbon on their backpack, on like some sort of clothing. And it was really cool to just kind of see around the school and knowing that like we as Embrace did that. And, um, once we raised the money, we brought in a good amount. And we were able to this year, um, pay for, I'm sorry if I say the name wrong, Kiara Adobi. Um, she was dealing with cancer. She was recently diagnosed. And she, um, we helped put, uh, money towards her GoFundMe. She was, um, a classmate of Ms. Cardozo's, one of the Embrace leaders. And I know that she appreciated that. And we thought it was something that would be cool. Ms. Cardozo brought it up to us and everyone in the group, it was like unanimous decision, like we all wanted to do it. And we collected, um, over $200 from the ribbon sales. And it actually is something that we plan on repeating again this year because we know that there are a lot of people who didn't get the opportunity last year. There are the freshmen teachers that didn't get them. And we plan to kind of like attack that once again and hopefully raise a good amount of money as well for the club. Thank you.
Omar, are you doing this one also?
Sure. So, um, something that we recently did was we teamed up with SCI, um, and the Boys and Girls Club Keystone and Spectrum. And we were also given aid from Woburn Welcomes to kind of set up, um, a sort of like holiday, just kind of an idea to raise spirits because everyone was obviously down with COVID and everything's first time. Um, most of us or all of us have ever gone through something like this. And the idea was to just kind of like bring back spirit to people. And there were a few events that took place. So there was a leaf raking, which, um, there were two days, I think it was Friday and a Saturday morning, where we'd go to, um, the elder homes and just kind of like rake the leaves for them and just clean up the yard. And that was definitely fun. It was all socially distanced with masks on, so we weren't, um, doing anything that we shouldn't have been doing. And we definitely got a few photos from it. It was a fun time for people. And then another thing, uh, kind of like later on that was pushed was the two holiday ideas, which was the holiday meal train and the holiday raffle. And the meal train was, um, an idea brought by Ms. Cardozo where we had a signup sheet and someone would sign up and the person underneath them would also sign up. And then as the list went on, the person underneath you would deliver to you and the person above you would deliver to the person before them. So then ended up just being like a cycle of like, kind of like a swap of food. And that one was delivered, um, contactless free. So then no one was put at risk or anything. And that was a really cool thing that Ms. Cardozo brought. And then we had the holiday raffle where, um, a few leaders from Embrace went around to different businesses, asking for donations to put together baskets. And then we hosted a Zoom and anyone who attended the Zoom was actually automatically entered into the raffle. And there were a few different prizes. There was like a Dunkin' Donuts gift basket, which is pictured right there. Um, there was Chick-fil-A cards. There was pizza gift cards and a couple of other things. And there was three flower bouquets. And those were just kind of raffled off, um, toward everyone there. And it was something really cool because it wasn't anything you had to kind of like put anything into. You just joined the Zoom and we just kind of all sat and like listened and watched. And it was, um, something cool. And then the biggest part of it, at least I'd say, is the positivity video we put together. It was, um, a small video where everyone took pictures of themselves holding a sign, saying some sort of positive message, whether it was in English, Portuguese, Brazilian, Arabic, just different languages saying, um, sorry, I mean Brazilian, um, just showing, um, kind of like positivity and to spread hope and everything around the holiday times. And that was something that was put together. Um, and I think that was a huge part of our holiday, including with the raffle as well.
Thank you all. Thank you, Omar. Mr. Crowley, I know that we're kind of going, running over. So.
Keep going. You're good.
Yeah, we'll allow it.
You'll allow it? Okay. Well, the only thing that I was going to suggest, maybe we, um, not skip over, but it's the, the positivity video is on our website. It's also on the Woburn Media Center. Um, and so I can, I have copies of that. Um, I believe there's a link embedded in the Google slides. So it's really up to you guys. I know we're running over, but it's about two minutes. Or we can have Pharrell and Tefat kind of just conclude us. Um, so it's completely up to you guys.
Do school committee members want to see the positivity video or do you want to view it on your own time?
Let's all watch it. It's only two minutes.
Okay.
Ms. Cormier, let's watch it.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Of course. I'm glad we watched that.
All right. I am too. Ellen, I am too, actually. I never, that never gets old.
All right. So, um, does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Martin?
There are two more girls that are going to kind of, um, they are going to talk about our future goals.
Oh, absolutely.
That's going to be it. Yep. Thank you.
No problem.
Hi, my name is Freeel Budif. Um, I'm a senior at the high school. Um, I am president of the French Honor Society, co-president of Tanner Tutors. Um, I've applied to a couple of schools, um, and I'm hoping to someday become a psychiatrist. So I've majored in biology, so I can get on that, um, pre-med track. Um, and here are some, uh, Embrace's future goals. So first, um, a goal that we've already completed, um, was to create and hang posters around the school of influential black figures for Black History Month. Um, so to the right of this side, there are a couple of pictures. Um, the following slides will have pictures that are in more detail. Um, next, uh, we want to continue to grow our club within WMHS. The more students, the better. Um, I remember when I joined this club freshman year, I want to say that it was primarily seniors, but recently we've started accumulating more students that are from, that are freshmen, sophomores, which is great because, um, we'd like to have participation throughout their high school career. Um, next, these two next, these two points kind of go together. Um, work with administrators and staff at other schools throughout WPS to coordinate mentorships between Embrace members and younger students and further educate our WMHS peers and staff about issues that are important to us. Um, like I said before, we want to try to get students involved in these types of clubs as soon as possible. Um, and also basically we want to try to talk about some issues that maybe our school system might have or some of our schools want to talk about in regards to, you know, race, equity, equality, whatever, um, things like that. So there's always something that we can improve on as a city and as a school system. Um, next, we want to foster more partnerships with local organizations, city officials, and others to collaborate on ideas and potential future events. Um, as you saw in previous slides, um, we've worked with a lot of other groups like the SCI, um, a couple of churches in Woburn and a couple of other clubs in Woburn High School. And this is all just to, you know, foster unity within the city and the school system as a whole, which is really great. We'd like to see that. Um, and finally, we want to secure funding to provide flexible, flexibility to attend and or host experiences like peaceful demonstrations, film viewings, speaking programs, museum exhibits, and more. As all of us know, education is key and it is the foundation for fruitful discussions, um, in Woburn and in high school. So obviously we want to get that done and have as, as many people as involved as possible. So that's it. Thank you.
It's tremendous.
All right. Does that wrap us up? Tefat, did you want to, did you have anything you want to add?
Um, do you want me to explain the, the next two slides?
Yeah, you can quickly explain them. Yeah, I think that's kind of self-explanatory, but go ahead.
All right.
You're, you're a freshman, so.
So, hi, everyone. My name is Tefat. I'm Freeel's younger sister. I'm a sophomore in high school. And I'm a member in, I play volleyball and I'm a member in Embrace, Model UN, Tanner Tutors, and Uniting Females of Power. And I'm just going to explain some of the posters that the members of our club created for Black History Month in more detail. So first we have Serena Williams created by Carly Dangora. And Serena Williams is professional tennis player, women's tennis player. She has won more Grand Slam titles than any other man or woman and has won four Olympic gold medals. Next, we have Asante Black created by Megan O'Brien. And Asante Black is an actor who combined his passions of activism and acting. His shows include When They See Us, This Is Us, and Social Distance, which talk about a lot of social justice issues such as racial inequality and police brutality. And he won an Emmy for Outstanding Supporting Actor. Next, we have Colin Kaepernick created by Lily Wilson. He is a former NFL quarterback for the 49ers. And with his fellow teammates, he kneel during the national anthem to draw attention towards social justice issues such as police brutality. And this, uh, unfortunately caused, cost him his NFL career. Um, Dr. Crowley, can you, thank you. Uh, next we have Sean Anderson, uh, more commonly known as Big Sean, created by Omar. And, um, Big Sean had a rough upbringing in Detroit, but he would later become an artist and sign with Kanye West. And he now uses his platform to speak about racial injustice and uplift other black voices. Next, we have Muhammad Ali created by Sophia. And he is known as one of the greatest boxers of all time. And he became an activist in the black community and refused to fight in the Vietnam War, citing his religion. And he collaborated with key civil rights activists such as Martin Luther King Junior and Malcolm X. And finally, we have Keisha Lance Bottoms created by Mrs. Cardozo. And she is the second black female mayor of Atlanta. Her lineage can be traced back to, uh, Shepherd Peak, a former Georgia slave turned freedman. And some of her many accomplishments as mayor, uh, as mayor include ending Atlanta's relationship with ICE and creating an LGBTQ plus advisory board. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our Embrace presentation. Tefat, I apologize for getting your year wrong. I feel like I missed. Alright, that concludes our Embrace presentation. To, to find, I apologize for getting your year wrong. I feel like I missed a year myself, but I apologize for that. But um you are the future of Embrace, you know that. So thank you, thank you again. Actually, thank, thank all you guys. Um, so Mr. Crowley, that um, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, so um, wow. Any school committee members have any questions for this panel of students? And I'm seeing Mr. Lipsit. Do you have the floor?
So I just, start just with a quick comment. Um, and that is, you know, I've, I've had the pleasure and privilege of, of being able to attend a lot of events. Um, that have been either run by or supported by uh the Embrace Club. And every time um it, it, it strikes me how incredibly comfortable. Um, every student uh who represents uh the Embrace Club is. In talking about tough issues in public forums, um in speaking truth to power. Um, and, and it's, it's been a real delight over the last couple of years watching. Uh, watching you all emerge as community leaders. Um, and, and so I want to first thank you for that. And I, I think ask, um, you know. Because I think, you know, having access to an organization like Embrace and having access to a space. Like what Embrace represents. Um, can help develop those skills. So I wondered if, if, if some of you might want to speak a little bit to. Um, to what Embrace means to you in, in sort of moving you forward. Um, you know, in, in, in the kind of activism and the kind of path that you're gonna take. Uh, what, what is it, what has it given you and, and what has, you know, Mr. Martin's leadership, Ms. Cardozo's leadership, Ms. Matthews' leadership allowed you to, to explore in yourselves as well?
I wasn't sure if anybody else was gonna take this, but. Actually, when they asked this question, so like for me. Um, Mr. Martin's leadership and Ms. Cardozo's leadership has been huge. When I came to high school. Um, I noticed that I'm the only student of color in all my classes. And it just kind of restricted the like, kind of, I don't know, like. I'd say what I could like, the scope of what I thought was kind of possible for me to get done. Being like the only person where I was like in my position. And so I was invited to the group and it just kind of showed me like that there are like obviously other kids here that. Um, I just haven't really seen in different grades and different classes, but it kind of brought me. Within this group of people that also share the same views as me and kind of have the same ideas as me. And then having um. Mr. Martin and Ms. Cardozo and Ms. Matthews just kind of like take me and all the other members of Embrace like under their wing means like so much. Because like it kind of shows that like, like these are successful people and like we could be just like them and like they were like. I know that Mr. Martin especially, like he's huge influence on me and um. I really look up to them, I really look up to them and that like that's something that kind of, I feel like my high school experience would have been entirely different if. Like they weren't a part of it. And it really just kind of helped me grow as a person, as a student, and especially as a person of color. And I'm really thankful for them, so thank you guys. And that's how Embrace affected me.
Um, yeah, I'd like to uh kind of reiterate that. I mean, um. I joined Embrace, uh it's, I believe it was its first year um being founded and. Um, that was kind of when I first started uh meeting Mr. Martin. I never had him as a teacher before he became an assistant principal, but um. He definitely became a huge influence for me, um, as well as Ms. Cardozo. Um, later on, I joined peer mediation, which uh she is one of the advisors for. And having the privilege of getting to, I guess, collaborate with my mom is um pretty cool. Uh, I mean, me and her have always been open-minded about a lot of things in our own home. Um, and we've always had these tough discussions and stuff like that, but uh it's really nice to get to have it with her, with everybody else as well and. But like Omar said, um, I'm obviously not very dark, but um. Being the daughter of an immigrant and speaking more than one language, I have dealt with. Uh, some, some racism when I was younger and, and stuff like that and um. Getting to be a part of this club and kind of share my, my personal opinion and see that there are other people that think like me that have dealt with things uh that I've dealt with. Or that are at least in the same boat or can at least understand me. Um, has definitely made a difference and having these advisors be able to just help us and you know we can rely on them if we need it as well. Definitely has helped me. Um, and I know many of the members of Embrace and the other advisors that are on here. Uh, get through our high school um years and yeah.
And can I just add something? Um, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, since joining this club as a freshman. Um, I would say my confidence, myself and my opinions has um. Increased, increased greatly, just because when I was a freshman, I was really shy. I didn't want to get myself involved in any conversations. And I would say that that mainly stemmed from a fear of, you know, conflicting with others, like, oh, what if they don't have the same opinions as me? I don't want to, you know, create problems, whatever. Um, but being in a club like Embrace has really shown me that it's okay to have different opinions. It's okay to disagree with people. It doesn't have to, you know, polarize you and put you to different sides. Um, and has made me understand that it's okay to be like, oh. I may not agree a hundred percent with you on this point, whatever, but we can still respect each other and agree that. Um, maybe we need to change something or other things like that. So I really appreciate, like I said, the confidence that this club has given me. In throughout my high school years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd, I'd also like to piggy, piggyback of what um my friends have said as well. Um, like, like what Emma said, um, obviously me, I come from like slightly different background heritage to other people, but. Um, kind of um, oh, so well, so I joined Embrace last year, well, yeah, last year. Um, last school year, sorry. Um, so I just moved to the school as well. I was just trying to, you know, get to know people, um, kind of blend in and I felt like. Um, like what Emma said, being in um, an environment or like classes where I was one of the few people of color. Um, I kind of had to, um, I don't know, not. On like a facade or persona, but um, I had to like, um. No, those are attitude I had to display around my classes that. I didn't have to use in Embrace where there were other students of color who I could associate um our experiences and that as well, so. I really felt like, um, you know, um, the platform that Mr. Martin, Ms. Cardozo and Ms. Matthews gave me. Um, just to speak and to, you know, um. Communicate, um, or I don't know what the word I'm looking for here is, but like. To be on that same wavelength with someone, um, it was really good for me, just growing in my confidence and, you know, we allow people to speak and embrace. Um, when you have discussion topics, um. And I feel like I was just really growing into speaking through. Um, the Embrace meetings that we used to have, you know, in person before you went into COVID and lockdown, but. Um, I'm just really grateful for all of our advisors and everyone else at the club who allow me to speak and just. You know, kind of guess off my chest or speak my mind, so it speaks, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address Mr. Lipsit's question about what Embrace means? Um, no? Okay. Uh, Mr. Kissel, you had a question?
Oh, I think um, Chair Owen Crowley, I think Christie raised her hand. Sorry.
So sorry.
No, no worries. There's a lot of us on here.
Okay. Hi, Christie.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to speak over anybody, so that's why I raised my hand. Um, I mean, I guess if everyone's giving their input, I might as well give mine too. Um, I just feel like um, Embrace is a place where I can. Speak my mind and give my opinion without being penalized. The one I remember, the very first meeting, one of the biggest rules was what happens or what's said in this room. Does not leave this room. And when that was said, I decided, I was looking, I was like. Wow, so I can say something here and I'll know that I won't get penalized for it. I'll be able to speak my mind, because. If you know me, you know, I'm very opinionated. I love anything that has to do with anything. I always have an opinion about it. But I just feel like, especially as a person of color, as a woman of color, it's really important for. Us to have an outlet, a place for us to talk about what's important, especially going to a predominantly white school. When I first, when I first came to Woburn High as a freshman, I didn't think I would find. People who looked like me or people who went through the same experiences as me, but then I joined Embrace when it was first founded with Mr. Brownie and Mr. Martin. And I was like, wow, I found somewhere that I actually belong. And I'll know that I'll make like a lot of friends here. I'll have a great experience here. And I knew from that first day, I said, I have to be. One of the next presidents of this club because it's so amazing and the work that we do is just so great, the way that. We've evolved by helping the community, reaching out to the community, just seeing this club grow. It's just been so great and so amazing. And I just hope this club. Just grows to like the, the biggest way that it can, because it's such a, such a really good club to be a part of.
Thank you, and I'm very sorry I overlooked you. Um. Okay, I'm gonna move to the next school committee member unless Amy Cardozo tells me otherwise. Uh, Mr. Kissel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I actually, I thought Dr. Wells had his hand up first, but I, I just wanted to say. Uh, not to question so much, but uh it was a great presentation tonight. It's amazing to hear from all the students who are on tonight. There was actually obviously quite a few. And I want to thank the advisors, the three advisors for starting the organization and opening up Woburn High School to giving a voice to many students. Whether I otherwise may not have been able to speak up or felt they could, so just wanted to say it was a great presentation. I'm very proud of everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. Now, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I enjoyed it too. I think one young woman summed it up about the ability to talk to people with differences of opinion. And still maintain respect for one another, and I think that's, that's really the important thing. I think a lot of people get cycled into. Echo chambers where they just hear the same thing reinforcing their things. And so I think this is great. So, but I was wondering, you know, whether it's possible the club could expand to have more of an impact in the community. By potentially, I'm thinking, having the police chief come and talk to your club, have a dialogue from them, the mayor. The superintendent of schools, having, you know, people in authority in the city meet with the group, get a different perspective. And the, they can share, you know, their thoughts on the city of Woburn, the school system and so forth from different perspectives. So that was just my two cents for where you can go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. And I'm seeing Mr. Mal Renin.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, obviously, thank you to Mr. Martin, Ms. Cardozo, and Ms. Matthews, but uh. When I brought this concept and idea to the administration about silver linings, or they, they tagged it as silver linings. Uh, again, timing is everything. Here we are beginning Black History Month and hearing from these students and administrators. And the, the concept, my idea was to get the good word out, the good things happening around Woburn. In the high school and all of our schools. And I think this is something that's been community-driven from way back when Mr. Martin started it. And I'm happy to see Woburn Public Media Cable is running this show tonight live, so that anyone that might not be on the Zoom meeting. They'll also catch up with it later on and uh perhaps get involved with Embrace and get involved with something in the community, but just to. Showcase what's going on up at Woburn Royal High School with these very eloquent and very well-spoken students. I'm looking forward to their future, uh, perhaps having them up on the poster walls at Woburn Royal High School as they get older and. Join in other endeavors across the channels. So thank you for your presentation tonight. All of you was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mal Renin. Any further commentary from school committee members? And I'll let Dr. Crowley uh close it out, but I just wanted to say that. Uh, just an observation that um Mrs. Cardozo and Mr. Martin, you're having some deep impacts on these students personally. Um, and I, I just think that that's profound. And I'm also very impressed about the way, the way in which. Um, you've branched out and really helped the community and really added community service. To the ideas about race and the ideas about empathy and, and really making the world a better place. And I, it's just so many layers to it. That it's actually very moving for me. Um, you know, it, you're just transforming these young people into these, these um future leaders. I'm just really excited to see how, how their lives unfold. And I feel blessed to have this presentation tonight and be in the city. That being said, uh, Dr. Crowley, do you want to tell us why this was a silver lining?
You know, I, I, I think it was very self-explanatory. This group is amazing. Uh, they came before us last year and. I knew the work was happening this year. Uh, the leadership, uh, as mentioned, is there, but uh really it's student-driven and. Giving students' voice is so powerful. And so looking forward to continuing the dialogue. We actually have a meeting scheduled for this week. Uh, with Mr. Martin, um, and then. Principals from other levels, and we've talked already about how do we incorporate uh student voice into the Woburn Public Schools. Uh, at all levels and as it relates to um. Equity. And so we're, we're excited about continuing the dialogue and I thought tonight's presentation, you crushed it. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Anything else from this panel before move to the next agenda item? I did see that you, you're thinking about requesting some funding. You're after my own heart here, so we'll be interested to see. What's involved in that? Alright, um, I think we should move on. I have to, excuse me for a minute to the agenda. Next on the agenda, we have um, Dr. Crowley, is that correct?
What about Mr. Duran? Mr. Duran, I believe.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Duran. Yeah. Okay, um, is Mr. Duran here to have the update on fall to winter sports?
I'm here. How's everybody doing?
We're wonderful. Hello, Mr. Duran, you have the floor.
Great, okay, so um, just wanted to give you an update on the fall too, we're calling it, um. The wedge season, uh, we'll be having uh indoor track, uh football, swim. Sharing in volleyball. Right now, sharing in indoor track. There's some guidelines, excuse me, that they need to work out. So until we get through those guidelines, we have a little bit of time here that. You know, the indoor things have been changing pretty much daily. Last night, something came out around. I saw it came across around nine o'clock last night about more numbers about people going inside and being able to use the gyms. Um, for practices and so on and so forth. So we'll work those out. Uh, indoor track, right now we have a five, five um meet schedule. Football's five games, um, swim is ten, volleyball's ten. Um, so you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's moving along. Uh, I think the, the winter, which is uh has been successful so far. Um, we've had a couple of hiccups, but nothing like other teams uh within the league. So we've been lucky on, on, on that end. Um, we're hoping to finish out. So we have Wednesday game, Saturday, and next Monday is the, is the finale for all the games. Uh, they have set up a playoff um. Uh, series where it'd be a one-game elimination for basketball, hockey. And we would just move forward with that if everything is clean on Monday of next week, so. Um, those are some of the things they're gonna practice, three to four days a week. Uh, pretty much what they did this year, uh, this in the fall, in the winter and in the fall. Um, there are believed there's gonna be some fans maybe on the outside venues. Um, so we'll just, as soon as it gets closer and closer and we make decisions on those, we'll, we'll move forward. And uh, and publicize those uh guidelines. Questions?
So actually, if, before, uh, before, well, do you mind if I jump in quickly?
No, Dr. Crowley, please go ahead.
Um, and certainly have the questions, but I do want to thank Mr. Duran, the athletic directors. Around the Middle Sex League, this has been such a challenge to have athletics this year. And I commend all the Middle Sex League uh athletic directors. We've had multiple meetings. This year, I think for the first time ever where it's a joint meeting between athletic directors and superintendents to talk about. Uh, safety protocols as it relates to the sports. And we've talked through whether we should have uh. Fans at games, what the protocols mean, is it equitable? Uh, and so the athletic directors genuinely have done a great job presenting to the superintendents. Their, their thinking and modifications as it relates to the sports. And by and large, we, oh, in Woburn, we've done an amazing job. And I, you know, Mr. Duran deserves a lot of credit, as do the coaches and, and the players, the athletes. We've had situations, of course, that have come up, but they've been addressed and, you know, we've been able to allow these, uh, these. Sports to uh, to happen. And I, I think it's really a credit to the, the parents, because we're not transporting. Uh, it's a credit to the. It's a credit to the coaches because we're not seeing spread, and it's just, it's been remarkable, so. I did want to publicly thank all the student athletes for the fall and the winter now, and then for the. Fall two season that we're headed into, to, you know, everyone's cooperation makes this work, and so. And it's it's a lot of extra work, and so I I, Mr. Duran will will tell you that it does, he it's not, but it really is. And I just want people to know that, and and so I just share that my appreciation, so I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley, as school committee members have questions, I see Dr. Wells, Dr. Wells for Mr. Duran.
Yeah, thank you, so my question was about the football season and. You know, the state of the the field with the snow and so forth, I know we do have snow in the fall, but. It's not usually as much as we've had so far this winter, and so I'm just wondering, is there gonna be any issues with using the field?
I don't I don't believe so, I mean, we usually would probably be next week or the week after. We would remove the snow from the field so our teams could practice, because usually lacrosse is starting up pretty soon. So they usually have a fundraiser. Us has a fundraiser usually on the March, it's like March tenth. So we usually do plow the fields for that for that occasion. Also, we don't really want them in the new gym, you know, now meaning, you know, ten, twelve years. That, you know, lacrosse balls are flying around in the gym and holes in the walls, so. We've always plowed the fields to to be ready, so that's not gonna be an issue. We're gonna probably start on the backfield and hopefully the front field melts, but if it gets close to a point in time where. You know, indoor track, which is gonna be somewhat outdoor, and then having football, we will plow plow fields.
Yeah, and you, the other question is, is it gonna interfere with the spring sports in terms of? You know, I know a lot of athletes do cross fields in terms of participating. Is it they're gonna cause any problems, do you think, or?
No problem, no problems with spring, then we'll have the spring season, I'm not sure the exact date, it might be like April nineteenth. Will be the first start of of the of the spring season. And then, you know, they they've lost the most, they've lost, you know, all of last year, and. Yeah, we'll get a, they'll get a good experience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, Mrs. Chisholm, did you have a question?
Yes, I did, I just I just think this is very important that the kids get to play, I think as much as we can bring back some sort of normalcy. For our kids, I think that that's what we need to push for, do you have seen the numbers being less, or is your kids just ready to jump out there?
No, I don't think our numbers are less, I I think, you know, like maybe in this season right here, the fall two. There might have to be some choices with, you know, some kids that do indoor track and football.
Okay, yeah.
But there has been other kids that have jumped on where they wouldn't be able to do volleyball. Because it's a fall sport, so them being able to jump into volleyball or. We had some, you know, kids being able to golf that were football players or, you know. They've been jumped into different sports, so we really haven't, the numbers really haven't been much lower. We do have to keep the numbers lower in how we pick the teams, though, that's the only downside about. The EEA guidelines of like such as hockey, you can only have twenty kids on the team. Which would usually have about twenty-five to twenty-seven, so. It's disappointing because, you know, we do have some seniors that. You know, would probably get those opportunities.
Okay, yeah, so and we have no difficulties with kids getting to and from practicing in the meets and games and.
We haven't, it's been, you know, we've tried to move that from Saturdays, Saturdays, a lot of the times hockey has been. Both hockey girls and boys have been on Wednesdays.
Okay.
I think I I know, you know, parents are just so used to, you know, trucking their kids from. To courts to rinks, so I think especially in this in this time. I think everybody feels safer also of jumping in cars and. You know, so that that's been, it really hasn't been an issue, you know, tonight, we we were supposed to have a basketball game tonight and. Belmont is the only team that has buses, so, you know, we're very concerned early in the day, because I forgot that they were taking buses, so. We wanted to cancel it early, but they said they were gonna have buses, but we ended up canceling the end, but that's the biggest concern with the weather. With the kids jumping in cars and driving over to Belmont.
Yeah, that that makes me a little nervous, but as long as as long as they can get some sort of an out, that's why I think we need to be able to. Provide as much as we can for them.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, oh, one line, did the track clear at the high school? Yeah.
The track's not cleared yet, no.
Okay.
It will be like we like indoor, we could start indoor as long as we stay to the numbers. And then their first meet wouldn't be until like March twentieth. By that time, we'll 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 do something definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Chisholm, any further questions from the school committee to Mr. Duran on athletics? Not seeing any, okay, moving on. Does that conclude the presentation on fall sports, Dr. Crowley?
I believe it does, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we got all that information, I apologize, I am having a little bit of an internet. Problem, so I I'm trying to keep up. Okay, moving on to Dr. Crowley. Covid update, presentation of dashboard.
Thank you. Just, I I'm so glad we have silver linings before we talk about Covid updates, but. I I'm gonna talk through, Ms. Cormier at the last meeting. Asked me to talk about the dashboard, and I will momentarily, I I just need to reiterate, I know that there's more people listening than. Than ordinarily, and I it's a team effort, and so I keep saying it, but we're, Woburn's in a great spot. Mary Heater, our nurse leader, is doing an amazing job. In conjunction with the school nurses and the Woburn Board of Health, and so we're in a health crisis, and again. Their medical professional knowledge is instrumental in keeping us safe. The central office team, the principals, the staff, the students, and ultimately the families, and the communication that's happened has really. Made a difference, and so thank you to everybody there, essentially, the the. The data dashboard that I'm gonna show you momentarily. Came about because we had a problem with data, as the number of Covid cases began to rise. In late September, October, November, Mary Heater. Was trying to manage it almost single handedly, along with the Woburn Board of Health. And so I outlined a problem in a in a meeting, in a in a central office meeting. And try to think about ways to design a workflow that could help, and one of the things that we did was go from. A centralized process where everything was reported to Mary at the central office, so for example, someone would call the high school. And then the high school nurse would call Mary, and then Mary would then be charged with figuring out. Who had Covid, who's the close contacts, etc., and so. We decentralized that workflow to allow the school nurses to really be engaged in this process, and they they took the challenge head on. And as I said, they've been instrumental in making sure that our students and staff are safe and the people that need to know information. Know it in a timely manner, and so out of that meeting. Came this amazing dashboard, and I'm gonna show it to you momentarily, but Courtney Young. Jen Judkins and Maureen Ryan really deserve the the majority of the credit here. You know, I I come up with an idea or a problem, and again, it's this team that rallies around to support each other. To to create something that you I think is really powerful, and it's allowed us to make. Real time and decisions and about whether to keep schools open or which schools we may need to close, or which classrooms we may need to close. And so it's really a powerful tool, it's it's in real time, and I'll show it to you momentarily, before I do. I just wanted to let everybody know that as of today, the Abbott Binax testing is. Ready and available to any student or staff in our in our school system, the nurses have been trained. And so folks have to opt into that, they've received emails to sign up, but it's really, again. A testament to our school nurses that they're ready to go, all that to say. They are also the school nurses ready to administer the vaccine. They've all had their initial vaccine shot, and I believe tomorrow we'll be getting their second round, so. We are making progress, I believe, in the city of Woburn as it relates to Covid. One of the things that we then had to figure out was what the responsibilities of each of. The school nurse and the nurse leader would be, I'm not gonna read these all to you, but essentially, we designed a workflow, we had to. It was too complicated with too many people getting involved, so the building nurse, as I said earlier, really really takes the ball and runs with it. And is able to put information into this dashboard, and then establishes the close conduct and kind of maintains. A through line with the with the case, whether it's a staff or a student member. The nurse leader reviews the Maven, which is the state dashboard with the Board of Health, and then also with Bob Alcanata and then myself. At the city level. She also can enter cases as if they come through Maven, so in other words, sometimes a a staff member who doesn't live in Woburn. May test positive, but the city of Woburn may not know, so the way that the the reporting goes. Is someone that lived in Wilmington, for example, Wilmington would get notified, and we Woburn would not. And so that Maven daily dashboard really is only for the city people, folks that live in Woburn. So it became a challenge, but Mary, the nurse leader, has been in contact. With the Board of Health, and then we have relationships with the majority of our surrounding communities. And it the the information gets put into our dashboard, and one of the other responsibilities of Mary's role is to report. We have to report weekly to Dussie, our staff and student, inform our positives to the state. And that includes people at our virtual academy, you know, of course, you know, students. Unfortunately, get sick at home, and just to be completely transparent, we report everything to the state, and so. That's sort of a brief overview of the workflow. On a macro level, this is, I'm gonna go through this again relatively quickly, but if if an individual tests positive. And they they test positive, it's reported by the family, the school nurse puts it into the system, and this is where I believe it's it's really powerful. Once it gets put into the system, and I I need to tell you what this, what we did was create a dropdown, so that when the school nurse. Gets a phone call, it says a student in their school is positive. Their school is in a in a dropdown menu, so all the school nurse really needs to do is is click that name. And all of the information that is automated automatically populated, because we already have it in our student management system. And so they they click the name, they click. In this event, a positive case, and that triggers an email that I get right away, so anytime there's a positive case. I get an email, the building principal gets an email. Bob Alcanata gets an email, and then you'll see the special ed director, Maureen Ryan, and the elementary curriculum coordinator. Courtney Young gets an email, and what that does is then, if there's a positive case, we, as again, we get triggered. That being said, the reason why we people need to know is, for example, transportation, so. If we have to make an adjustment to our transportation and do it in real time, Maureen Ryan is able to do that. In real time, because she's able to see the workflow as it as it comes through. And similarly, on the elementary remote instruction, if we've had a couple situations where we've had to. Close classrooms over the course of the year, that that allows the coordination to happen so that. Students' education is not disrupted in any. I mean, it's we're we're in a Covid world, but we're trying to minimize the disruptions, and so again, the. The workflow, this is what we built, I mean, this is, I'm really incredibly impressed by the thought that went into this. And that, you know, we had a problem, we solved it ourselves. This is the overview, and this is a screenshot, I I was very careful because obviously, this is a confidential nature, but. This is what I I can see anytime I want, and. The, I'm gonna walk through it with you relatively quickly, but this screenshot was taken on Sunday morning. When I did this slide, and so what I can see here on this pie graph. Is that on Sunday morning, we had four positive cases. We had five awaiting diagnoses, we had one that was presumptive positive, and twenty-five people that were considered close contact. And now, if I wanted to click on, and I can't do this in real time because it's it's a screenshot, but if, and I'm gonna show you. Momentarily, but if I wanted to see who was the 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 four positives, if I click on this. It changes here, and I and I can drill into the. The case, I'll know the names and where the folks are located, these all change in real time as well, so this tells us. How many days students are or staff are on quarantine isolation. And so this was on Sunday, so this was Monday, and then today, so we've had seven people come off. This week right now, and this tells us where people are located in the grade level. And again, it's all predicated on that student management system linking to the school nurses when they record a case. This is what I was alluding to earlier, we have twenty-five close contacts on Sunday morning. And then I can see that it's twenty-four students and one staff, and if I click on the staff. And I I can tell you who that is, or I I would know who it is, the students and where they are, and so. Again, similar, we had the four positives. On Sunday morning, I can see that it's two students and two staff and where they are, and so. It it, again, I think it's an incredibly powerful tool that that was created. By us, it it's just an amazing example of the teamwork that has. Transpired throughout Covid, but this has really allowed us to make informed decisions. Prior to this, I can tell you, Mary Heater has been working, she works every Sunday at the Woburn Board of Health. We we don't have weekends right now, and so. On on Sat- Saturday is about the only day where where we're not, where we're not living on pins and needles. But Sundays, Mary's at the Board of Health and then is reporting out to us cases. And prior to this, we were, you know, we were having to go through texts and multiple phone calls, and now we're able to look at something. In real time to help inform our decisions, and so. I I think it's just a tribute, as I keep saying, to to all the talented people that work in the Woburn Public Schools. There's a couple other updates that Ms. Frigg and Mr. Dr. Balasari will talk about, but before I go there, does anyone have any questions relative to? The. The dashboard?
I have a question, I can't raise my hand, though.
Okay, Ms. Cormier.
Thank you for this, this is fantastic, I love looking at this, and. Just like you said, it just stream, it makes it so much more efficient, and I like that you have. The quarantine days remaining, because I know I get arguments about that a lot at work, trying to figure out the day math, so that's fantastic. You said in the first slide, you were talking about vaccine, and that the nurses are obviously getting their second, but they are. Are they prepared to give it to the teachers and staff, is that what you were alluding to?
So that's the hypo, that's a hypothetical at this point, Ms. Cormier.
Okay.
Right, that's our, that's our hope, we're planning for that, as as, just to be very clear. The city of Woburn is only receiving a hundred vaccines a week right now, and so until that increases. We we're in the queue as educators, our hope is to, and and. Working with the Woburn Board of Health is to organize so that the Woburn school nurses and the Board of Health would be providing vaccines to the to the staff. That that opt to have the vaccine.
Right. Excellent, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier, Dr. Wells?
Yeah, thank you, I know in the past, we've. Had staff give presentations at forums and so forth for some of their academic achievements, and. This really seems like something that deserves recognition outside of our little enclave, and I don't know. If there's any way, you know, you know, the the staff that helped put this together can be recognized either through some kind of. You know, organizational presentation, I, you know, I don't know whether, you know, other superintendents would be. I, you know, I don't know whether, you know, other superintendents would be interested in this type of reporting system and so forth. But I really think, you know, we want to broadcast this, the fact that you guys did all this. You know, and so I hope they're looking for some way of presenting this to get the recognition they really deserve.
Thank, thank you. We, we did present it to, to the mayor and the Board of Health. And I've shared it with other superintendents and that they've, they've hoped some of their work after this as well.
But maybe if there's some kind of confer- you know, virtual conference as they may be, where, you know, for nurses or you know, health, student health, this would be, you know, worthy thing to present and just so, you know, they get the fair recognition. So just keep that in mind.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Any more questions for Dr. Crowley at this point?
Follow up, sorry. That was my phrase. So at this time, you know, using all the data we've collected, have we had incidences of transmission in the school or something that we, or have all of our cases, you know, we can't, we're not, there's no clear cut transmission in our school so far? I'm just wondering if, if you can evaluate that with the data you've been collecting.
I, I would say that we're 99. whatever percent certain that it's not transmitted in school, but there's no way of completely net out. What we're not seeing is the transmission the way that we were afraid that we would see back in, in August when we, when we started school. And I would tell you that it's a tribute to this, to the kids, the masks and the social distancing. This, and, and the, the staff. And so we're just, I happened to go to the Shamrock preschool this morning. I didn't do that in anticipation as a question. But even our, our youngest kids are, are doing their best to wear their masks and it's just, it's remarkable. So, thank you.
Yeah. No, I think that's an important point. We want, you know, there's no clear cut evidence. You can't rule out the negative, but you can say, you know, you have no evidence. Convincing evidence of transmission in the school. I think that's important to get to the public, you know, to, to show that the steps that your staff has taken, the students have taken, all the things that we're doing have seemed to work in that sense. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Mrs. Chisholm.
Yeah. Too bad we didn't patent that and we could have made some money off of it. And we could have sold it to other districts instead of being friendly and just sharing things.
I like it.
Yeah. On the, the testing in the school, were the parents supposed to opt in or opt out?
They opt in.
Oh. So you'd have to hear from all the parents if they wanted to do that. I thought it was that they would just send something if they didn't want to have it done. Isn't that an awful lot of paperwork to be done too? Are most going to do it or no? I mean, do we have a?
I don't know how many, I, it's, it's recent. So I, I don't know exactly how many folks have opted into it. We'll continue to promote it.
Yeah.
It's something that is available to, to our staff and students. You know, so hopefully people take advantage of that opportunity, but.
So when the testing is done at the school, how long before they would know the results?
15 minutes.
Okay. So they would know before their kid actually went home, the child went home.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. That's awesome.
Just to be clear, if you're tested, you need to go home.
Right. Oh yeah, right. I know. But I'm, I'm just saying that they would know that now this is going to be something that they have to take their other students with too.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Any more questions? Then for Dr. Crowley at this juncture, before he, seems like he's going to refer it to Ms. Sprague and Dr. Baldassari for more updates. Is that right, Dr. Crowley?
That is correct.
Okay, Ms. Sprague.
All right. So this is sort of a tandem report as Dr. Baldassari and I have been working on a couple of different things. One is what we've called Cohort D and the other is the live streaming. So Dr. Baldassari, I don't know if you want to start with. I was going to start with Cohort D, but I'm open for either one. I think you're on mute.
I said, and I was going to start with live stream. So how about if you, how about if you go first?
All right. So Cohort D, I, I believe at the last meeting, we did present that we were looking into it to see if we, if we could bring some students back to school for more days each week. We were looking at some of our highest needs students, which are EL level ones and twos. And having those conversations, we have discovered that there's things that we need to look into a little more deeply at some levels. Currently at the high school, we need to ensure that there's safety in, in not crossing cohorts. That's something that we started back in the summer and through the fall and winter, we've been pretty consistent with making sure we don't cross cohorts. We're also looking at space to make sure that we're keeping the distance that, that we have agreed to. A minimum of three, but striving to, to hit six feet in our classrooms. And the other piece, when we bring students back from the high needs groups, we need to look at staffing and make sure that we have the appropriate staff available to provide the services that those students need when they return. But also to provide, continue to provide services to students who are fully remote. So those are things that we have taken into consideration in looking at the high school. They are able to meet those three needs. So starting on the 22nd, which is the Monday we return from vacation, they are going to be bringing back EL ones and twos. And they also have, sorry, just do a blink.
Task.
The tech, thank you. I was going to call it peak. It was the task program. Who is going to return as well because they can ensure the spacing, the safety and the staffing. Because of the, the number of teachers that they have and the requirement through the contract that teachers do duties, they are able to provide supervised learning for students within the building through duties of teachers. We are working with the middle schools and elementary schools to try and move forward in the same regard with, with students there. But again, the safety and the spacing have become a problem in some classrooms. So we need to look at students across the board and, and come up with ways that we can start to bring students back. We know how important it is for students to be in school. So it is, it is the process that we are beginning to delve into more deeply. The high school and the priority at the high school is, you know, graduation, reducing dropouts. And also looking at that will support those other areas as well.
And then for those of you who were at the LPAC meeting last night, this did come up and you know, when we first started the discussions about Cohort D, we were looking to first bring back our English learners at levels one and two. Because language acquisition happens best face to face and, you know, we recognize that a lot of our EL students aren't exactly engaging in the, in the remote side of learning as, as we would, you know, as we would hope. But in our, I said, call this, I guess, Wendy, what our fourth look at things.
Yeah. There's been a significant amount of time by our group of people to try and figure out the best safest way to do this and meet the needs of as many students as we can.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we do have to kind of prioritize because aside from our students who are English learners, we have other students who have similar need and may not be engaging or would benefit from four days of instruction, instruction for a number of reasons. So we, we have to come up with a way to prioritize because the simple fact is that now that we know that, you know, as long as we can keep kids, you know, at the proper distance and we have the space and the staffing and, and they're safe, we can bring kids back. But the thing is, is that we have only a, a limited number of seats when we look at the safety, you know, the safety piece of it. So Wendy and I will be working with principals over the next couple of weeks to prioritize how we're going to bring students into Cohort D, particularly at the middle and elementary levels.
I, I think the op- the opportunity that we have with the high school being able to bring a group back is to learn from those experiences and see what works well and see what we can replicate at the other levels. So this is sort of phase one of our, our process here to return kids to four days a week. And, you know, we will be diligent at looking at things and trying to bring back as many students as we can.
And I think I should move on Wendy to the live stream.
Yeah, unless we want to do questions.
Yeah. Is there any question? I guess, yeah, questions about Cohort D first and.
At this juncture, Assistant Superintendent Sprague just gave us an update on Cohort D. Does anyone have any questions about that or sure? Do you want to wait till Dr. Baldassari gives us information on live stream? I'm seeing Mr. Lipsit.
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question. So we, you referenced distances between seats. Do you anticipate that there will be some significant change? I mean, I know we, we are trending toward are, are, we're at six feet at the vast majority of classrooms at the moment, right? You don't anticipate that changing, drifting closer to three feet?
Not significantly, no. There might be some minor changes, but I, it would probably be the closest in, in looking at the numbers we did when we just did the EL students that we had potentially that may return. Trying to remember which school it was. I think it, some of the.
The Land Scott and the.
Right. But we had figured out that we could space them by moving them to other rooms. That, that wasn't an issue. There was another building, I think it came to about five feet was the.
That would certainly concern me given, you know, we're starting with the transmission of, of a more, more transmissible variant, things like that. So.
Right. But that wa- it wasn't any closer than five feet and that was not in every classroom in that building.
Thank you.
Doc, people keep moving around. Doc, Dr. Wells, did you have a question for Assistant Superintendent Sprague at this point?
Yes, yes. How many students are we talking about at the high school bringing back and how many staff?
So the staffing is, is consistent with what they currently have. It would just be the assigning of duties. For a student, it's roughly 100. That would be in four days. And some of those are Cohort A that would go into Cohort B and some of them will Cohort B that would join on Cohort A days.
Okay. So essentially we'll be increasing the, you know, some of the students will be increased to two more days a week. But will there be some students that they'll, they've been remote the whole time and they will come for four days, like sort of, or? No, okay. So everybody will just okay, two days. Thank you.
Current in-person students that we're just adding two more days to their, their off cohort days will then become their in-person days.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Any more questions at this point? There'll be time after, don't worry. Dr. Baldassari, did you want to handle the live stream?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Ms. Crowley. So as you are likely aware and that we've discussed many times, we have had some challenges with student engagement on the remote side of hybrid, meaning, you know, when they're not in school and when they're doing asynchronous work. Or being asked to log on to the computers at certain times. And at the middle school and high school levels, the, you know, particularly at the high school, Ms. Callanin felt strongly that live streaming classes would be a way to reengage students and have them participate with their, with their classes at the same time that they're happening. If while the teacher is teaching students in front of them, students who are at home could log in and see that teacher or see that class. So this was put forth, you know, probably late November, early December. And what happened was, you know, kind of like looking into it, we, we had worked with the Joint Labor Management Committee that we meet with on Tuesdays as part of our return to school memorandum of agreement. And worked through, you know, is this something that we could do? And so a pilot was put in place at both middle schools and at the high school. And the pilot included, you know, teachers who were really interested in live streaming and some who were on the fence or maybe not as interested in it. While at the same time, surveys had gone to parents and teachers about impressions about live streaming. And at the end, when the pilot was done and when the surveys were done, it was overwhelmingly positive from the parents and overwhelmingly positive. You know, from the staff, at least there were staff who, who wanted, who weren't, weren't concerned about it. And there are many staff who wanted to do it. There weren't many, as many staff who were, you know, just, you know, completely opposed to it. And so, you know, just at around the time that we ended the pilot, the Department of Education had issued new guidelines with regard to engaging students. So everything kind of fell together at just the right time for us to have a conversation with the WTA about live streaming at the middle school and at the middle schools and at the high school. And, you know, naturally because, you know, we all believe that the live stream would be a great way to have students be, you know, more connected to their peers and more connected to their teachers. That was what we were hoping to do is to have a full live stream across both middle schools and at the, and at the high school. And, you know, the, there were benefits to that, you know, for, for teachers who moved into live streaming, they would no longer have to do the asynchronous work. And when a teacher does the asynchronous work, they have to do all of their classes and all of their teaching. But they also have to prepare all of the lessons for the asynchronous side of instruction. And, you know, we're, we have been and we are, and we were prepared to provide tech support. And, you know, with available funding, provide devices to support, you know, teachers doing this in their classrooms because some of them, you know, would do it differently. And certainly some professional development time and, and PD offerings. And for the students in the live stream attendance would be, and for those who are teachers who are doing it now, the attendance is mandatory. So the hope is that by live streaming, that we're going to keep our students connected longer and not have as much of the disengagement that we have happening on the non, you know, non-in-person days. So in talks with the WTA, there were many teachers who were very interested in doing live stream. But unfortunately, not all the teachers were, is enthusiastic about it as some of their colleagues. And, you know, the, when you look at what we've gone through this year and what they've gone through this year, you know, starting, you know, in March, you know, everything that teachers did changed. And then over the course of the next four or five months, they, you know, recalibrated and made and became new types of instructors.
Mike, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think an important piece too to mention here is that you know, the WTA wanted to start the pilot with teachers that were really engaged in and interested. And they're going to be encouraging their members, more members to join on. So I think we're at that point that we're going to need to support this a little bit more to get it more active with as many teachers as we can. You know, and putting those supports in place for them.
Right. And, and so, you know, where we are right now is, you know, you heard, you know, some in the beginning is that there are teachers who are live streaming and some who are not because what we agreed to was that it would be optional. So for those teachers who wanted to live stream, they could. And for those teachers who do not want to live stream, they would continue to do their work and then provide, you know, the asynchronous instruction. You know, so we are, we have made a big leap forward with regard to live streaming. And, you know, all of the members of the JLMC have stated their commitment to working together to, you know, you know, grow this and have it expand to more teachers in the middle schools and in the high school. And, and we're really optimistic that, you know, because of the, you know, a lot, a lot of the positive work, you know, that's going to come from, you know, from live streaming and the good data that we're going to get, that we will have more teachers live streaming as time goes on. We just need to be collaborative and work closely as we have been with, you know, with, with Barbara and Eric and, 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 you know, Jim Byington and, and Mary Johnson and, and the WTA in general. So we, we are optimistic and it is happening and we're proud of what we've done thus far, but, and we think that we can do more together.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Sprague and Baldassari. I'm seeing hands up. Dr. Wells. You have the floor.
Yep, thank you. So could you just, you know, explain a little bit more about the live streaming? Does it, is, you know, I can visualize it, but maybe just tell me exactly what it is. Is it, is it more interactive with the students? Is it just the teacher being present to present just some more details about what it?
What it is, is that the teacher, the teacher's presenting in the classroom as they typically would with their interesting students. And they're being set up with an additional, some of them an additional laptop, some with a, a camera and with a, a specific speaker. So they don't need to be wedded to their own device. They can move around the room. And the students are allowed to participate. And, and as you've probably been part of in some of the meetings, you've been in this breakout sessions. So teachers can put students in breakout sessions or start a lesson, allow the students at home to do independent work and bring them back for the end of the lesson. It's truly up to the teacher as to how they design their, their instruction and engage the students.
Yeah, so is it possible to work with the teachers to see, you know, I understand some might not be, want to do it, but to somehow, you know, incorporate the other teachers, you know, in the breakout set, you know, something so that all the students could see the live streaming, but then the break, you know, the other teachers could help with, you know, answering questions or something. I'm just trying to think of ways that we can make sure the students are getting equitable, you know, learning.
Just to understand your question, are you talking about, so for the teachers that are not currently doing live streaming, engaging them in it? Is that what your question is?
Or, yeah, using the live streaming, let's say it's two, one sixth grade teacher does and one sixth grade teacher doesn't. The, the one that does would live stream to everybody, both classes. But the, you know, so they would give the presentation, but the other teacher would help with the answering the questions and so forth, so they wouldn't have to, you know, I'm anticipating that they don't want to just be on camera all the time and things like that. But I'm just trying to think of ways that we can work with the teachers and work with everybody so that people are getting the most equitable treatment.
So I think that's certainly worth something to follow up with, with the, with the, you know, our Joint Labor Management Group to talk about. But the concern would be, you know, teachers are in their own classrooms with students. And if we start combining, you know, look at how, how to handle that. But it's certainly, I have to continue the conversation with.
Okay, because I do think, you know, you know, there is an issue here about equity. And, you know, we, you know, so, you know, we have to, we have to work, work towards equity. You know, we don't have it right now, it sounds like, but we have to be making attempts. And I think we have to make the, the teachers understand that too, so that they understand that, you know, we're, we're talking to them and trying to understand them, but we have an obligation under the law. And, you know, so, okay, thank you.
And just to say one quick, one quick thing, and I mean, not all kids were, were disengaged from asynchronous. And for some of our kids, asynchronous was equally as powerful because they were, they had, you know, other responsibilities to either care for their siblings or working jobs. So there, it's, we, we have work to do, you know, as we look at, you know, how kids are doing in the live, in the live stream as time goes on versus kids who aren't as well. So there is still data to be collected.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. I'm seeing Mrs. Chisholm.
Yeah, I, I think it's awesome that we're trying to get these kids back to school. I think that has to be everybody's goal and I'm sure it probably is. It's just, I'm feeling the kids are just hurting out there big time. I think it's just something that, you know, across our great country, the kids are hurting and we need to put this as a forefront. And I, and I know that we have teachers that have done phenomenal work and they've bent over backwards and they care for their kids like their own. But we have to make sure that every kid does get equal. And like John had said, it's, it scares me that they're not. And I just, I, I fear that we're going to have a lot of kids that are not going to be able to continue and do what they've been doing in our great system. I mean, it's, and again, we're not alone, but our goal has to be kids back. You know, whether or not we just start bringing them back for a full day on the two days that they're here and work out the whole lunch program and figure out how we're going to do that and take baby steps. But we have to be able to get these kids back. You know, it's going to be a year and these kids are, I just, you know, it's, we hear from parents all the time saying that it's just not working. And then they get set into ways that school's not going to be a priority for some of these kids, because they're going to learn that they can do something else, especially the high school kids. You know, and that, and that scares me because we're going to have a dropout rate that's going to really hurt us. And I just, and I don't want kids to become disengaged and I think that's what's going to happen. So we need to make sure the parents know that we're doing our best to try to make this. And I hope the parents that are listening understand that you guys are working extremely hard to bring it together. So as long as the union knows that we're behind them and we support them, but we need to get them back in the classroom. So I, I mean, I felt for that mom tonight. I think that it's, it's scary if, if I had a kid that I didn't feel was getting equitable and I'm proud of her that she came forward. And we got an email from another mom stating pretty much the same thing. So I think that it needs to be a priority and we need to march forward and try and do our best to make it happen. Sorry that my little soapbox, but it's, it's scaring me that these kids aren't in school, so.
We, and we agree with you, Ms. Chisholm. If you, I mean, if you think about what we're doing, we, you know, the, the work to get schools opened and get the model that we have in place has been, you know, monumental. Yet we still, we are still making, trying to adjust and adapt and make things better in the model that, you know, we never knew that we were going to be able to pull off in the first place.
Right.
I mean, so it really is amazing. And it's a testament to, as Dr. Crowley said, to an incredible, you know, incredible group of people. But we're still, we're still coming in every day and saying, how can we make it better? And, you know, it looks like it may start, like we may bring cohort D back kids one at a time.
Right.
Based on their needs, you know, we, we are committed to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm, and thank you, Dr. Wells and Ms. Chisholm for circling back to the parent who came to speak to us tonight. I think that's really important to do, so I appreciate that. Mr. Lipsit?
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to echo the thanks to, to the parents who spoke tonight, to the parents who emailed us as well. And, and, you know, I mean, this is, it's incredibly tough. There are no easy answers here. And, you know, I, I agree, the administration has been working incredibly hard to, to deliver as equitable an education as we can in, in the midst of, and I think we have to remind ourselves, in the midst of, of a health crisis that has taken the lives of nearly 500,000 people across the country. And that, I think this, you know, that hard work extends to our school staff, to our classroom teachers. You know, I, I speak as, as a teacher as well, when I, when I tell you that, that every educator in the country has been working twice as hard as they ever have in their career. And that's true whether people have been live streaming or doing asynchronous work or entirely remote, whatever the situation is. And, and so what I want to say is I hear the frustration and I hear the fears and, and they're warranted. I also want to mention though that I, I think, you know, one thing that I have seen taking place, both in, from colleagues who are teaching remote and colleagues who are doing hybrid, is that there are aspects of, of, of remote learning that have actually worked fairly well for some students. I, I think we, we have to, at times, remind ourselves that nothing we've ever done in education has worked for everyone. And that's a sad truth. And it's something that, that, you know, we work as educators every single day to try to fix. And, and teachers are on the front lines of that. So what I think we need to remember is that live streaming is, is yet another, and I think as, as Dr. Baldassari began to say, live streaming is yet another mode of education that our teachers have started to roll with this year. And I applaud those who have taken that leap. And I also, I, I honor those who, who haven't made that leap or, or aren't going to. They're thinking about what's best for their practice, they're thinking about what's best for their students. And so I think it's, it's incumbent on us to do the best we can to deliver that education. It's incumbent on us to do the best we can to support teachers in, in how they, how they feel they can best reach their students. And if that's live streaming, then that's wonderful. But I also think, you know, there is, there is good education being done in the midst of a very, very difficult situation. And I, I think we, we also need to highlight that as well, so, thank you.
Mr. Kessel?
Yeah, I just want to echo kind of what everyone's been saying, but talking about dropout rates and so on, obviously, we're going to be looking at those at, at some point, if this continues, to probably creep up a little bit. Because I know, just at the college level, there's a lot of students that aren't going back. And the reason they're not going back is that particular school chose to go remote. And it's not the same experience and it's not the same, they're not getting that, not so much the college experience, but it's just not for them. So, I mean, they have a choice to go or not to go, unlike, you know, our students. So I think what I'm also seeing in the school system and probably all around the area is, you know, kids that just aren't getting it at this point are really disengaging and the grades are going down. I mean, I just know from a personal standpoint, a lot of friends and so on with students that are struggling. So the live streaming, I guess my question, I don't know if it was answered before. What are the teachers that aren't really interested in doing that saying? Is it just, they're just not into it, it's not for them, they don't want to learn it? I mean, is there anything that's being kind of noted that we can work with them or?
But the, the first thing I, I think it's important to say is that this really is in its infancy. Aside from the pilot, you know, people, there's going to be, just when, any initiative we get, we get into, we have early adopters and then we have people who come on after. So we don't know, you know, by name, who, you know, who's interested immediately, who's interested next week, who's trying to make adjustments now and thinking about it, you know? I, I do think that, you know, as far as, just like any work, people get into, they get into a groove or they have habits and they feel like they're doing, they understand what they're doing and they have a momentum. And now, you know, it's a shift, this change is hard for anybody. But I think there will be more folks coming, you know, to the live stream side.
Yeah, and, and obviously if, if it's going to work and it's going to engage a lot more kids, I mean, we're asking our kids to completely adjust as well, and there's so many more of them. So we're, we're hoping that the kids will adjust and, and, and so on, but I think a lot of them are struggling. If the teachers are struggling to kind of adopt this or, or understand it, if there needs to be more professional development, you know, quickly, just to kind of get them on board, maybe their peers, like John was saying, one sixth grades into it, one isn't. Maybe they need to team up and just kind of say, this is how it is, it's pretty easy, you know, almost like-
Wendy had something to add to that too, right, Wendy?
Yeah, sorry.
I, I think it's important to note that the curriculum, like we set up pacing for our curriculum, so the same material is being covered, whether it's live streamed or whether it's asynchronous. So that, I understand it's a different approach, it's, teachers have, you know, varying beliefs in pedagogy and, and how they choose to instruct and that, that's something, you know.
Yeah, and we've run into this with the, the blue and green team at the Joyce, you know, the different pace that they're at and so on and the way, you know, so we do hear it from parents, obviously, that they don't feel their child is getting exactly what the other child's getting because they're a step ahead or something like that. But, yeah, I mean, obviously you guys are working on that. I just, I'd really like to see whatever works best, just be implemented across and not kind of pick and choose who can and can't do it. Just work with those folks and hopefully get them all on board. So I think we're going to lose, unfortunately, without being too pessimistic, we're going to lose a lot of kids. And I can see that happening easily and the kids just at the age of whatever, when they can give up, I'm just going to do that, just kind of move on and say, well, you know, it's not even worth it, I don't get into it. So I just don't want to see a lot of that happening, so.
Hopefully, a combination of these efforts will, will help, you know, as we can bring students back, as we can increase live streaming. Hopefully vaccines come along and we can get more kids back in classrooms, you know.
That's goal number four. All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any more questions from the committee to central office administration on anything? Nope, not seeing-
Yeah, I just, I just had one.
Yes, Dr. Wells?
Yeah, I could, could, it was discussed earlier by our student rep about the five-minute meeting. And maybe just explain that, what that is, you know, so that we have a better handle and the audience can have a better handle of what that is and what the purpose is.
Do you want me to take that?
Yeah, go ahead, Wendy.
So under the, the new guidance that was sent out within the last, what is it, mid of February, so a month and a half, from DESI, they are requiring check-ins for students. They want, there's been a, an increase and a sort of a, sort of a outspoken group of pediatricians and mental health professionals in the state because of the increase that they've seen in student sort of risk-taking and suicidal ideations and, and the like. So that they are asking for there to be more contact with students and more eyes on students, even if it's just for, they just want a brief period of time so that students, if they need to ask a question, they can. Something to note at the middle and high school, there's also, there's a half hour, it's not mandatory and what the state has put out is not mandatory. We just need to offer a timeframe, so offering it at each class, but also offer, there's a half hour offering every afternoon that's available, teachers are available online and are frequently meeting with students who will check in and they, they do additional support and instruction during that block as well.
So does it work, you know, just trying to see the logistics of it? The student, is this, so is this an online thing where the teacher's available and the student, you know, emails or something? Or is it a live thing where the student, the teacher goes from student to student in the class or something, I just?
It, it's like, it's sort of like this, John. So like there's a link that's available and students log on at the beginning of class and make contact with the teacher. It's that connection there.
And do all students have to do that? Is it required now that all students make contact?
So for the, for those like sort of daily check-in pieces, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
For the student, it is a requirement that the district have that available and that opportunity is open for students.
Okay, all right. And do we, you know, I know we do daily attendance and things like that, but is there any way we can have our counselor, you know, you know, use that data to check on students that may be at risk, is there any?
Yeah, so that, yeah, that has been ongoing, we have been tracking student attendance and, and the guidance folks have been very engaged in that since the, the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. And I'm not seeing any more, more questions for Ms. Sprague, Dr. Crowley or Dr. Baldassari. I just want to remind the committee that every Tuesday I represent the school committee at the, the Joint Labor Management Meetings and we tease out a lot of these issues. And, and the meetings have been fantastic with the teachers. Also, what I, what I extracting from this presentation is that 100 more students are going to be going to school four days a week. So I know how complex that is, so I want to thank the administration for, you know, because it's, it's tremendous amount of work and just getting more students in the building, I think the school committee is very pleased with that. So thank you so much.
Ms. Callanan. Sorry, Ms. Callanan and her team at the high school need a lot of credit for that. They've done a lot of work to make sure that they can accommodate these students.
Thank you, thank you for mentioning that, that's good for the school committee to know as well. And of course, we're always here to support the administration in anything that they, they need in order to improve the education system for kids, you know, during these very difficult times. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Mrs. Chisholm, finance?
Yep, we met yesterday at the school committee conference room at 3:30 at the Joyce and attended with Superintendent Dr. Matt Crowley, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Baldassari and Bob Alkonata and school committee members, Dr. Wells, Andrew Lipsit, Pat Chisholm and Ms. Crowley. We had received the bills earlier and that this has been actually working out pretty well. And I will forward to all the members, the list of all the questions that we had through the bills, because those that haven't served on finance might not understand how we go about this. But it saves a lot of time meeting with the admin team so that they don't have to sit there and listen to John and I ramble for an hour or so. But warrant one was for $613,257.52. Warrant two was for $1,162,189.29. Warrant three was for $45,096.64. Warrant four was for $1,283.42. Warrant five was $421,681.96. Warrant six was $140,609.04. Warrant seven was $88,242.83. Warrant eight was for $108,602.57. And I need a motion to accept those and pay those bills.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to quote, "pay those bills" in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call. Please, Dr. Crowley.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Kessel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes. In favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Crowley?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that motion passes seven zero, we will be paying those bills.
Awesome. The school budget will be presented to the, the full committee on the first meeting in March, which is the 10th, March 10th, so we'll be getting it then. And the city has now approved that the school, school department can have a credit card, which will be held by, held by the administration for emergency expenses. And for situations that arise where companies that do not take purchase orders from us, this will eliminate the amount of time that people have, personnel have to use their own money or their own charge card to pay for these things. Our school lunch debt, which is so exciting, has been reduced after a great deal of work by- Our school lunch debt, which is so exciting, has been reduced after a great deal of work via business office to 18,452, and that's down from almost $70,000. So kudos to them for doing outstanding job and doing that. This total reflects about 104 students. There will be additional outreach for them and the debt will be turned over to our collection company that we hired if they don't pay those bills, but we're getting there. And assistant superintendent Bob Alkonata updated the finance committee with the status of the payroll adjustments that need to be made. And he will update the full committee at tonight during executive session. The new data sheets that will be put into place to assure that moving forward errors will be eliminated or minimal. And discussion on how we can move forward with adding payroll policies and procedures for all staff. And a recommendation to include it in our policy manual is made, but that will have to go to the policy subcommittee. So we'll give that to Mr. Kissel and he can take on that.
There you go.
And I'm meeting adjourned at 4:20.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. I appreciate it. And thank you for sending your minutes around.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the balance of accounts.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. The motion to approve the balance of accounts in a second. A discussion on that motion. All in favor, roll call vote please.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
The Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
More than.
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes. Those balance of accounts have been approved. And moving on. Mr. Lipsit, curriculum and data trends. Do you have minutes?
We do not have minutes. We will be meeting on Thursday and I will transmit minutes after that.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Personnel Subcommittee, Mr. Malrenin.
We have not met Madam Chair, although we do plan on meeting on Friday morning. Forty minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Malrenin. Policy and Safety Subcommittee, Mr. Kissel.
We have not met. I'm working with Dr. B on the new policy and whatever Pat Chisholm just mentioned as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kissel. I appreciate that. Resource and Capital Planning Subcommittee, Dr. Wells.
Not met yet. Not met yet.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Student Services and Achievement Subcommittee, Ms. Cormier.
Yes, we met on Thursday, February 4th via Zoom. In attendance was myself, Dr. Baldassari, Maureen Ryan, Ellen Crowley, Christopher Kissel, Michael Moren and Julie Cotton from CPAC. Meeting was called to order at 9:03 a.m. For the sped update from Ms. Ryan, they're working on literacy programs with a focus on dyslexia in the district. She's working with Courtney Young to align the gen ed and sped instruction for equity and consistency across the district. They're training another group in the Lyndhamood Bell program and updating current materials. A lot of the programs over the last year have updated to digital subscriptions due to pandemic, which optimizes learning. And Maureen is working on identifying the very best tools and implementing them across the district. The screening process has been streamlined. They're identifying students earlier per guidance that was put out and adopting a new screening tool. They were rechecking grades one and two in case the old screening didn't pick up any issues. We're expected to start the process in March, putting together a document for the website with frequently asked questions as well as the sped manual. And Maureen has been working in collaboration with our districts to see what they're using, what's working well before you investing in tools. And she's been working with Andover and Burlington. And the earlier identification is obviously best for the student, for the district, and to provide correct tier instruction that they need. For assessments, we're continuing to have staffing challenges due to COVID, whether it's quarantine or leaves. We need to, of course, do the last third of last year and all of this year. We're seeing more referrals. Some students that were on the cusp now having more loss due to the closure. There's contract work with a neuropsychologist to do testing so that we don't fall behind. And of course, we're doing the best we can and the families have been very being very good in this whole process. But she's working to be more efficient, streamlined and more accurate, which I feel like Ms. Ryan does in every aspect of the sped department. We're thinking ahead to next year. Some concerns about more sped referrals than in a typical year due to the COVID, as I mentioned, and of course, needing staff and the time required for the assessments. Focusing on the tier focused monitoring preparation for the coming weeks. And this is things that have already occurred and Ms. Ryan has a good handle on what we've done well and what we haven't done well. But it is an intensive process and the things that haven't worked well, she believes has been corrected. And the compliance manager is doing a lot of prep work and figuring out what we have and what it is we need. But the data reported and the coding needs to be accurate and we're in a much better place than we were a year ago. Extended school year is still a work in progress. It is challenging, of course, hard to schedule without knowing what the specific parameters are going to be, whether it's still six feet. Of course, masks, things like that. But she also wants to make sure that we have good certified educators in place. She's working with the CPAC for an informal virtual coffee hour to facilitate communication with parents. And Ms. Crowley had a, I think it was Crowley, but out of district costs, planning for potential out of district placements that will go out when parents when we go back to full in person, some may have held their students back because they don't see the point in going. They have opted out of going out of district at this point during the pandemic where they may opt into that option once we are full person. And we just hired another adjustment counselor who was a former intern to provide student centered support. SSA update cohort D is Dr. Baldassari mentioned. Working the transportation and spacing, not a problem. And of course, we heard everything that he just had to say, which was more than I have. The equitable translation and communication policy still in draft form will be submitted to the superintendent and then to the policy committee. We've mentioned that a couple of times. The home language survey went out on February 1st. There's 37 languages, the top five being Portuguese, Spanish, Haitian, Creole, Arabic and Urdu. LPAC met last night, 6:30 via Zoom. There was like 30 people there, I think. And that was informative as always. A lot of parents with really good questions about how to access certain things like the plus portal. So working on different ways to support parents there and, you know, offer like sort of trainings on how to access these things. Dr. Baldassari presented the family and community engagement self assessment tool for building positive relationships. In which was going to publish a report for recommended action steps for the district. The economically disadvantaged student count was provided and of course, I put this into my minutes for everyone to see, but in fiscal year 2015, we had 1,300 students and in fiscal year 2022, we're looking at 1,500. So an increase of 200 for the preliminary number. Summer programming, there was a meeting for power scholars, the Malcolm White AM Learning and Afternoon Rec Program. There was a discussion with Seth Lucas from the YMCA and they're also looking to bring in Julie Gage in the Boys and Girls Club for the older kids, but the YMCA is receiving some funding to support evaluation of summer learning. And we're exploring summer recreation and learning program options. The Supervised Learning Center, Mayor Galvin approved seventh graders for the Intervention Academy at both sites and 50 qualified students have been identified. Another report presented was the Condition of Education in the Commonwealth Action Guide called Community Schools Connections: Shaping the Future of Learning Through Collaboration. There was an update on Medicaid claiming for the nurses, nursing services, counseling referrals. Of course, return to school planning always ongoing. Including the social emotional learning planning as well as changes to staffing. We talked a little about the wellness policy review, foster care transportation reimbursement reports. And a backpack program that Dr. Baldassari and Adriana Mendez Sheldon met with Social Concern to identify families with food insecurity for when the free lunch for all program ends at the end of June. Partnering with the Boston Food Bank and how to support those families. There was a question regarding the William James Interface. There were 26 referrals between June 2020 and November 2020. And there was a nice little report on that, some breakdown, but 16 of those 26 were between ages six and 12, 50% male, 50% female. 21 of those were requests for individual therapy. Most of the calls were made by guardians. 19 of them learned through the service via the school and there was a lot of anxiety, depression were the sort of the top reasons for calling. CPAC update, they had their January meeting with Julie Gage of the Boys and Girls Club regarding typical offerings and how they've adapted for COVID. Especially offerings and adaptations for youth with special needs and they went over flexibility and communication. They met again this evening at 6:30 with Rory Lindstrom of the Recreation Department as well as two of the three coordinators for the Best Buddies Program, just to sort of go over the rec offerings, what Rory is looking to add to to be more inclusive and then also just kind of an overview of the Best Buddies program, which I ended that before coming here. And we adjourned at 9:59 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Any questions for Student Services?
Yeah, I do. I do have one, Madam Chairman.
Sure, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, the counselor position, was that a new position or was it a previously filled position with a new person?
I do not.
It was.
Yep, it was a vacant position. It's it's not a new position created.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Any, not seeing any more questions for SSA. Okay, moving on. Future agenda items. You can just email me if you'd like to see something on the agenda. Mara Emblor will be coming to give us a report on the Recreation Commission. I think the Woburn Education Foundation should come. Anything else? You can just email me if you see a need for a future agenda item. I know Dr. Baldassari is working on a policy for us, which will be very exciting. So I'll just let members email me if you need more future agenda items. Correspondence. We have an email as Mrs. Chisholm referenced from a thank you, I want to say to Karen Martell, who reached out to us via email and I believe you all received that email.
Correct.
Yes, Karen Martell. Yes, okay. I will accept a motion to enter that public record.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, that motion, all in favor?
I.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
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 Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes, that motion passes. This is part of the public record. And just to summarize, the issues that Ms. Martell brought to our attention are very similar to Ms. Adenizio's concerns with regards to the equality with live streaming. And of course, wants the children to go back to school as soon as possible. And the check ins that are being mandated or were actually provided, not mandate, excuse me, that children now have access to might stress children out. So the major issues are that some teachers are live streaming, some aren't. And that the, this is not creating an equal education opportunity. And that it could be more disruptive for the kids to check in. So thank you very much, Ms. Martell, for sending us that email and that's been entered into the public record. Mr. Malrenin, is your hand up for?
It's just trying to figure out what category would come under Madam Chair, but I know the topic has been discussed. I know the superintendent and assistant superintendents have brought it up during tonight's session. And I might as well just put it out there. If we could just get an update through Dr. Crowley. We can all anticipate his answer, but as far as the plan for going back a little bit with our students, we heard about the cohort D thing. We have learned that we are not going to stay remote after February break because of the excellent work of everybody involved. So I just didn't know if the superintendent wanted to kind of just give us a timeline if he has something in mind or just continue with the meeting.
Is that a future agenda item or do you want the superintendent to?
Well, I kind of forgot where we were at, but I just kind of wanted to get that out before the public, before we go to adjournment. I don't know what category it comes under, but if you don't mind.
Madam Chairman, why don't you say if maybe after the February break, we can come back with a timeline that they're hopeful for so that we have some, we have a plan in place. But I mean, as difficult as it is, because we all know that it could be thrown, but just not for tonight. So I mean, yeah. We'll make that for the March meeting. That's okay, Mike.
Thank you, Ms. Malrenin. So I'm inclined to to put timeline, a timeline agenda item on the next agenda that will give Dr. Crowley ample time to come to inform the school committee as to what he's thinking for return to school. Is that?
That's sufficient. Thank you.
Suffice, Mr. Malrenin?
Sure does, yeah.
Thank you and thank you, Mrs. Chisholm.
Poor guy in the spa tonight. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that and I think it's a very important topic and we'll put it on and we'll see where the administration is. And just transparent as to what the complexities are of return to school. Okay. Any more correspond, I have more correspondent, excuse me, Dr. David Crowley from Social Capital Inc. reminded me that they're running a program parent forum. And the next parent forum is called Creative Ways to Get Your Kids Moving. And that's on February 17th at 6:00 p.m. So they've been purposely putting their events at 6 o'clock in order for parents to jump on the school committee meeting. So I deeply appreciate that from David Crowley. Another Crowley. So thank you, Mr. Crowley, for sending that to me. And I think that's a correspondence. Yes, Mr. Lipsit.
While we're, while we're speaking of SEI, it was brought up a little bit earlier, but they are also running a three part series that had its first, first meeting tonight. The Disrupting Racism Learning Series, which is happening every Tuesday over the next three Tuesdays counting tonight. So the next meeting will be February 23rd at 7:00 p.m. and it is via Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. It's called Disruptive, Disrupting Racism. That sounds fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Any more correspondence from the committee members?
There was one. There was one today. Yeah. From the baseball coach.
Yeah. Who's that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Not a Crowley.
Moved away from my desk because of the internet. So Mr. Joe Wells sent a thank you note to the school committee members because the baseball dugouts have been officially built. And so he wanted to offer his gratitude to the school committee for supporting this endeavor. So I appreciate that and I sent that along to the school committee members as well. So.
He said he got the keys today, right? You got the keys today?
Yes, he got the keys that.
Now, Mike, did you have keys first though?
So. So thank you, Coach Wells, for expressing gratitude towards the school committee in this regard. Okay, any further correspondence from the committee members? Not seeing any. Okay, moving on to the school committee does have executive session. And one remaining agenda item that may be impacted by the executive session. The school committee is going to go into executive session for the purposes to discuss something that may impact the school committee's position and ongoing collective bargaining. Specifically, we're going to review correspondence from the school committee attorney, Ms. Attorney Colby Brun who wrote a opinion for us to consider and we will be considering that in executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for that purpose?
I just have a quick question, Madam Chair. Did we purposely skip Mr. Alkonada's internal controls update?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that that agenda is going to be talked about in public, but the the issue from our attorney, you need to hear that first in order to properly consider the internal controls update.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for the purposes raised by the chairperson.
Second.
Do I have any discussion on that motion? Okay, we need a roll call vote to go into executive session and I'm going to ask everybody except school committee members and administration to sign off.
Madam Chairman, but you have to make it clear that we're coming back to regular session.
Yeah, because we have to make that vote.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. I really appreciate that because I want to do this right. We're going to go into executive session for the purposes stated, as I stated, we're going to come back. If there was a vote in executive session, we will announce it in public. We're going to finish the. We're going to finish the, the meeting in public and we will, we take minutes in the executive session as well. So we will be returning to the public meeting. So if people want to sign on in about fifteen minutes.
Well, we can just let them in when they want to come back.
Okay, that's probably the easiest way.
Just let them in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wells. I always try to get that right. Okay, so we're in the middle of a roll call vote.
Yes, yes.
Chisholm voted yes.
Yes.
I think you said Kissel, yes.
Mr. Lipsett?
Yes.
Mr. Malrenin?
Yes, in favor.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes, so we have a unanimous vote to move into executive session. I will respectfully ask everybody to sign off. And, and please feel free to sign back on in about ten minutes and here the. Public, end of the public meeting. I will report that no votes were taken and the school committee did, as we announced, that we discussed a matter that could influence. Our position in collective bargaining and. We are ready to proceed with the rest of the agenda. I believe it's internal controls, Mr. Alcanada.
Yes. So I think that will be.
Here we go.
Okay, great. So this is a riveting topic and it is late, so I will, I will move along as, as quickly as I, I can. But I am delighted to give you the, an update on what we've done over the past eight or nine months. And building and rebuilding infrastructure and implementing some internal controls. And as you see, the title of this is. What I've really tried to do is restructure, realign and enhance. So next slide, please. What we need to remember is about a year ago, prior to me coming on board, Woburn Public Schools reached out to. Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, MASBO, which is my professional association for an operational review study. Often we refer that to as the Crafton Report, since John Crafton, the former executive director of MASBO. Led that study, identified a number of areas in the business office that could be improved. That would be true really for any, any business office. And most especially due to COVID, this will be a multi-year plan by the time we can get to all of the matters. The other thing that I wanted to indicate is. When I began this job, it was always my intention to, as a standard operating procedure, to. Review all of the systems, have time to observe them, the systems, the processes. Talk with my staff who are involved in these processes, understand what's working for them, what isn't, see if I could identify any deficiencies. Or anywhere I could be helpful. So that's how those two things sort of came together. Next slide, please. In terms of restructuring, the most, I think that one of the most important tools that I have introduced and that. The staff has embraced is the introduction of a personnel action form. Commonly referred to as a PAF. This really is a, is a management tool that will document our payroll modifications. Demographic, whether it be an address change or last name change, a salary change, benefits, et cetera. It's what I call a transactional document because it is, it is transacting the payroll change. And essentially writing it down and it really provides an important internal control where all of these changes are authorized by. By me, the assistant superintendent for finance and operations. So that there are more than one check offs when somebody wants to change their 403B. Increase it, decrease it, whatever it might be. And as I said, it really creates a payroll record. That we can research in the future, so we can go back three, four, five, ten years and, and. Know why a salary changed if someone was promoted or if they moved along a horizontal. The other thing is we have, we have created a payroll timeline and calendar and some of that is being implemented. Now, we know we're going to pay, when we're paying people twenty six, twenty two and twenty one times. But more importantly, it's a dual functioning calendar. So that within the payroll period, we're making sure that we are being, we're streamlining, we're being efficient. I've asked for the payroll to be run on a Friday before the Thursday payroll. So that I have a chance to review it, make sure that everything is correct. And if we need to make any changes, we do. That has been running. Quite smoothly and well for everybody. And then in processes, I'm trying to create an annual payroll calendar so that we know we can look forward. When we have the special perils, for instance, if we're, we're paying, you know, the coaches in the, the fall or the winter or the, or the spring. Or what have you, so we can, we can react better to that. So that's really about the restructuring. In terms of the realignment, I think about this as I have in my professional career, if a. If, if your vehicle is not aligned appropriately, you're going to get to wherever you need to, to, to need to, need to be. But your, your vehicle is going to work harder getting there. So what I really try to do is formalize the. The communication workflow processes, what I call both horizontal and vertical. Horizontal in terms of from payroll to human resources in the business office. And then vertically between central office and, and the buildings and vice versa. And what that really does is that the, the next bullet down is we're reconnecting these processes. The new workflows will be more, make processes more streamlined. For example. When, if HR is aware of someone going on a leave of absence, whatever it is, that needs to be communicated to payroll. So payroll can become involved and let that person know, let staff member know. How many vacation days, how many sick days they have, if that's, if that's appropriate. And in addition to that, that formal communication, that formal process. Makes hiring for all of our positions, all of our vacant positions better. And quite frankly, in the summertime, when we have retirements, when we have people moving on for new jobs, it'll make that process. Much, much better. Next slide, please. So enhancing, there are a lot of systems in the business office that work well. And so, so what I've, what I've tried to do is essentially just enhance them, breathe some, some new life into them. We collect a lot of data in terms of attendance and substitute usage. And we want to assess that on a regular basis, not to, not to say that somebody is out sick and doesn't report it. But through data, we have improved outcomes. So if in my, if in the business office, we can. Look at these attendance records and see any patterns, we can be more helpful to other principals or, or department heads. One of the things that I have undertaken is to assess essentially all of the payroll records. If you will, for, for essentially the, the entire district and we've made improvements there. We have found. That there were some, we've made some payroll corrections. In, in looking at all of the records, there has been about. Point zero three five percent in payroll corrections, which comes to about twenty four thousand dollars. And that has, those are in the process of being corrected. So in assessing those payroll records. We've put in structures and enhancements where these errors won't be made going into, into the future. But as I said, it is an infinitesimal number that, that we have found in terms of those, those payroll records and I'm confident that. The internal controls that have been put in place have corrected those, that situation. Additionally, what we'll be doing is implementing a quarterly review of payroll. So I'll, I'll be pulling out about ninety to a hundred payroll records four times a year. That will ensure that all payroll and benefit, payroll and benefit accuracy. This actually will measure the efficacy of our new infrastructure and workflow modification. So when pulling those. We really shouldn't find any errors and if we do, we can correct those. Immediately. And finally is. The data sheets that we, that we have, that we pass out every year. I'm formalizing a quarterly assurance of those data sheets. I'm sorry, an annual review of the data sheets. For, for good purposes, because we have a number of staff that move horizontally along the columns. And we want to be sure that we're accurately reflecting people's time off for vacation, personal and sick days. Not to indicate that we're not doing it now, but I would like a more formalized process to. To ensure everybody that, you know, if they have ten vacation days reported, that it is actually. Ten vacation days. So last slide, and I've moved through these a little bit quick due to the, the time. But really there are other aspects of central office that we're, that we're reviewing. I didn't want to. I didn't want the school committee to think that we're just focusing, I'm just focusing on payroll and HR. But there are other aspects of the central office that will be a review and, and initial modifications will be taking place. This will be a multi-year initiative by the time we get to all of the aspects. And I have to say that the central office staff has embraced the process of change from the business office, HR and payroll. That they have embraced the new structures and the new workflows. And as I said in the meeting today, we're going to, we'll learn this together in terms of what, what, what we're doing well and, and what we could be. Could be doing a little better. So again, I've, I pushed through this a little bit quicker. And happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Alcanada. Any questions from the school committee to Mr. Alcanada on his presentation?
Riveting subject, I know. Thank you.
Well, I, I want to appreciate, I, I think it's because the two subcommittees reviewed this independently, personnel and finance. So kind of, it's not that it's not riveting, because it's definitely up there with the embrace kids, but.
Not quite.
Anyways, so is there any questions on, on processes? None? Okay.
I just want to state that, that we'll also, you know, be looking at our policies to. Incorporate some new policies reflecting the findings of Mr. Alcanada. So that our policies in the future will be more encompassing to help deal with situations as he's presented.
My subcommittee.
Thank you. So Mr. Kissel and Dr. Baldassari, maybe we could tease out other districts to see what kind of controls they have in, in this regard. And see if there are any adopted school committee policies that cover this. Thank you very much.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you. All right, I guess that's it. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Any discussion on that motion?
Oh, good night.
All in favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
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 Night, everybody. Thank you.